Mike check, one, two. Can everyone just confirm that they can hear me? Pastor Tefoyah, can you hear me? This is Raina with the City of Selma.
Hi, Raina. I can hear you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. It's so good to see you, even if it is virtually.
I feel the same way, except I can't see you right now.
Oh.
But I can see the council members. Hi, guys.
Hi.
Hi, Raina.
I know you did. They do this.
Right behind you. Or in the chair and do it.
Well, you know, my predictions was right, you know. Someone asked me a direct question. It says, how long will he take this pen, you know, this vaccine will come out? Right at the election or after the election? How do you know? It's a public rollout in December. And looked at me like, are you crazy, Avalos? Oh, I just got that. I was waiting for her phone call. But that's okay.
Hello? Hello? Can you guys hear me?
It hit my phone number.
Yes.
Hi, Mayor Franco. We can hear you loud and clear.
My apologies. I lost track of the time. I thought I had 10 minutes and I looked at the watch.
All right, man.
That's quite all right. I think we just need, I need 30 seconds.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Hi, Mayor Franco. I think we're ready to go.
All right. Welcome, everybody. Calling the Selma City Council regular meeting for December 7, 2020, at 6:00 PM, located at the Selma City Council Chambers in Selma, California. Via teleconference phone number 1-301-715-8592. ID number 868-2657-6451. Excuse me. Password 1893. So with that, I have an official notice to read. On March 4, 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state emergency in California as result of the threat of COVID-19. On March 17, 2020, Governor Newsom issued the executive order N2920, which allows a local legislative body to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make the public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and address the local legislative body. Pursuing to the executive order N2920, please be advised that some or all of the city councils will participate in the meetings via teleconference. Public participation pursuant to executive order N2920, and given the current health concerns, members of the public can access meetings streamed live on our YouTube page. Members of the public may not attend the meeting in person. In lieu of attendance at the meeting, the public can provide public comments verbally for the City Council consideration by calling on the number posted on our agenda. Staff will unmute the public during the public comment portion of the meeting. Alternatively, the public can send correspondence to the City Council regarding agenda items by emailing publiccomment@cityofselma.com by 5:00 PM the day of the meeting with the subject line "Selma City Council Meeting", followed by the correspondence number or "Selma City Council Non-Agenda Item". All correspondence that does not relate to a specific item on the agenda will be made part of the official record of this meeting and will be referred to the city manager or other staff for any appropriate actions or attention. Correspondence that does relate to a specific item on the agenda will be addressed as appropriate during consideration of the agenda item to which it relates. Contact the city clerk with any questions by phone at City Hall at 559-891-2200, extension 3104, or by emailing, using the email reference above, which once again is publiccomment@cityofselma.com. Okay. Before we go into our invocation, I want to, want us to take a moment of silence. As we all know, Stan Louis passed away just before our last meeting and his services were actually just this weekend. And I know we all know Dr. Louis and what a tremendous individual he was, not only to his family, but as giving back to the community. He was a person who led his life with integrity and led by example. It was obvious that he cared about his community, but was, what was more obvious is that not only did he care, he did what he could to make it better. You know, whether it was his volunteering at the school with all the service clubs or his commitment to public safety with Measure S and Measure P. Dr. Louis really made a tremendous difference in our community and losing him is obviously is a tremendous blow to his family, but he leaves a unfulable hole in our community. And he wasn't just a community member extraordinaire. He was actually a friend. And so with that, I'm going to ask us to take a quick moment of silence and then we'll move on to our invocation. All right. Thank you. And I know council will be discussing Dr. Louis later in the meeting, and I'm sure that we'll do something as a community and as a city to honor him the way he deserves to be honored. Okay, with that, I would like to hand it over to Pastor Tefoyah from the First Christian Church for our invocation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I bring greetings from First Christian Church. And I've also been asked especially to extend greetings from Pastor Cesar Garcia and the members of First United Methodist Church on this historic City Council meeting. Let us pray. Creator God, Maker of all things, we give you thanks on this evening for the gifts and blessings we receive and for the challenges which you place before us. We thank you for the freedoms we enjoy and the responsibilities we bear as residents of this beautiful city. We are especially grateful for those who work so hard to make living in Selma safe and pleasant, the police and firefighters, and all the men and women who care for parks, infrastructure, city planning, finances, code enforcement, administration, and all the others that faithfully serve this city. Their jobs are challenging all the time, but at this time, during this pandemic, they face daily challenges that none have been prepared for. Even the most benign personal interactions can come with grave consequence, yet they continue to show up and do the work they've chosen. We ask your special blessings and care for each of these that they might continue to do their important work in good health and positive spirit. Tonight is a special night, an historic night for our City Council. Two council members will be ending their terms. They have served with great dedication and care for the city and her residents, and we thank them for their hard work, saying, well done, good and faithful servants. Two newly elected council members will be sworn into their offices, as will our first elected mayor. We've never done a swearing-in ceremony on Zoom before, but that does not in any way lessen the importance of this event or make their oaths any less binding. Lord, we ask your blessing upon each of these as they begin their terms in these new positions. The work of the City Council is important to the lives of each and every person who lives in Selma. May each member of this body remember Jesus' admonition to those who would leave others, lead others, must first be servants to all. May the good of the city and her residents always be their focus. And may each be kept healthy and safe from harm in their service to you and to the city. We pray all these things in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, everybody, please stand for the flag salute.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible,
Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos.
Here.
Councilmember Treheo.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Here.
Mayor Franco.
Here. Potential conflict of interest. Any council member who has a potential conflict or interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Okay. Seeing that, we will move on to oral communications. Notice to the public, at this time, any member of the public may address the City Council regarding any item over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issue raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. City clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Mayor Franco, I see we have no callers at the time, nor do we have any emails on the line.
Great. All right. So now our next item of business is our council reorganization. Item 1A, I guess, we'll hand it over to you, City Clerk Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor Franco. Elections Code Section 10263 states that upon completion of the canvas and before installing our new officers, the governing body shall adopt a resolution declaring the results of the election. During the consolidated presidential general election, the City of Selma placed two ballot measures on the ballot, as well as the, for the first time, our district elections. Measure E appeared on the ballot and, if passed, would have changed the method of electing council members from four districts with an elective at-large mayor to a five-district election of all five members. Measure L also appeared on the ballot and, if passed, would have allowed for a licensed gambling establishment in the City of Selma. The City of Selma received from the County Register of Voters the certificate of election on November 27. Pursuant to Elections 10264, as soon as the states, as soon as the results of an election is declared, including a consolidated election in which the election results are declared by the county, the Governing Board of the City is required to enter in its record a statement of result containing specified information, all of which can be found on the City Council resolution before you. Simply to confirm the requirements of Election Code 10264, the council is required to adopt said resolution, which will serve as a permanent record of the election results on the municipal elections and the measure that appeared on the ballot. That is my report for Council today.
Okay, so you just need a motion and a second on that?
Correct. I do need a motion and second, and I need to take roll call.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Consideration of Resolution Declaring Municipal Election, Al Domer III, 2002.
I'll second it.
And I will, I will second it.
Sarah, second it.
Okay. City clerk, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Treheo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos.
I sustain.
You abstain?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Mayor Franco.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, at this point, Jim, I think it's time for us to say our words and let the new, the new group take over.
Yeah, Franco, I'd rather go last since I'm the oldest councilperson here on the council, 16 years. So if you allow me to do that last, I want you to go first.
All right, I'll give you that. All right. Well, first of all, I want to say really quick to the community of Selma, thank you very much. I feel very humbled and very honored to have served on City Council the last four years. I, I really feel that grateful and humbled to give them the opportunity to serve, and so I want to thank you, the community. I also want to thank my family for to continue to support me, not over just the last four years, but over, over a decade in me wanting to give back to the community of Selma and doing what we can to make our community better. It's something that resonates within me and my family. And without their support, I couldn't do such things that I've done and that, quite frankly, I will continue to do moving forward. And last, quickly, I just want to congratulate everyone who won the election. I want to wish the new council and city staff well and success in the future. I want to wish the new council and city staff well and success in the future and remind the community that, that their success is our success. So as a community, we must do what we can to support our, our city council and city staff. And, and keep in mind, city staff, that our responsibility and our purpose for being here is to serve the community of Selma. So thank you very much, and I will see everybody out there. Everybody have a blessed Christmas, stay safe through this COVID. And we will hopefully in 2021, we will get back to a sense of normal. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Teresa, City Manager for the city of Selma. And on behalf of the city of Selma, we would like to present you with this plaque of the gavel for your dedicated service to the citizens of the city of Selma. I believe you have that there with you, and we are indebted to your service, the many accomplishments that you have done while working with the City Council, and we appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Well, thank you. You know, it's honor and you know, I always say we can all make a difference in our community, no matter what position or where we're at in our community. I mean, we spoke about Dr. Louie, who never served on council, but the difference and the legacy that he leaves behind is fantastic. It's, it's extraordinary, and there are several individuals who've done that without ever being on council. So I, I speaking to the community here, because I know my colleagues on the, on the dais already know this, that we, that you out there in the community can make a major difference if you put in the effort and are committed to the community as a whole to raise our community to higher expectations. It can be done, and it can be done, really, quite frankly, it can be done very quickly if we work together. So with that, I'll stop talking and I'll hand the mic over to Jim. I would like to mute myself before disconnecting, because I would like to hear Jim's final words.
Thank you.
Thank you, Franco. One more thing, Scott, you got it now. You got the agenda.
Yep. I'll take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also would like to present on behalf of the city of Selma this plaque to Councilmember Avalos for your dedicated service to the citizens of the city of Selma. You had 16 years on the City Council. So thank you for all of your accomplishments and your service to this community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have a few comments. I wrote a few things. I was going to write a book for a second here for when I start writing. Not often, but you know, I'll be honest with you guys, 16 years in the, you know, in the council have been, you know, been challenging years in my, in my life being on the council. And I will tell you something right now, I'm going to be going off the council, you know, now. But at the same time, I'm going to be keeping an eye on the new council and the council in play right now, guys. Because I'm not going to, and I'm not going to color code it, guys. Right now, we're in a pandemic situation, and we're going to need every councilperson to step forward, you know, in this situation. I've gone through it with the, in the past with the, you know, downturn in the economy. But this is a different situation here, guys. This is involving businesses, development, everything's on the, on the guidelines, guys. This is something where everybody's going to have to come on board, from staff, from every community that we have and our community staff members. Everybody's important. I mean, from the city attorney, the city manager, the city council that's going to take place right now, make a decision, what's going to take place, what's going to direction of our city advancement going forward. And we have a lot of stuff on our plates, guys. We have the, we have the Amwood project, we have Mr. Gill's projects, we have Ravens projects, we have the Mountain View projects, we have the Save Mark Building coming to play, and we have Office Max, people moving in there. Then we have the Golden State projects, then we have Federal Transportation, and not to mention the hotel. These are important things that are going to come into the city of Selma that's going to be very vital, very, and very important for the city, that you guys will make an important decision to move forward. Any deviation, you know, from any staff member, when I say staff member, that goes from any staff member. When I'm talking about staff members, I talk about engineers, city attorneys, city managers, the people that work for the city, and everybody's that, that's in play, has the best interests in the city. Because especially right now in the pandemic situation, experience matters. Very experience is a very important thing right now in the experience of a pandemic situation, because it's the people you know and the people you make contacts with, the trust that you had developed with the county and the state level government, and that's what you guys are a part. You guys know players right now, very important. These, you have two individuals that are new coming on board. But I'm going to rely on you veterans here and these staff members and the city attorneys, especially the city attorney. You, the city attorney is very vital right now, because right now, we got developments going on in our city right now. We have county situations, very, very important things on the table right now. Anything deviate from any of these issues right now will put the city of Selma backwards. And very, I'm very, and the reason why I'm telling you this, this comes from the experience of a person who's been on the council for 16 years. You know, I've seen it and I watched it. Avalos doesn't say too much, but when Avalos got to say something, he tells the truth the way it is on the line, man. This, right now, I, these newcomers coming on board, I'm going to rely on you guys to teach them, to get them up to speed, what we have on the table. Because this is, this, this will get past the pandemic situation. Trust me, we got to sit back, we have the CARES Act situation going on. You guys got to really step to the plate, honestly, to help a city of Selma, not just the city of Selma. You got, we belong to five cities. We got to help the valley people in the valley as well, working together to get our community, our valley back to work. It's very vital, because people work outside our city that come in our city and live, but it's important that we got to do our best, step to the plate. It's going to be a different dynamic game, but it's going to take maybe a year or two years in this situation. But I know you guys can do it. You guys got to step up to the team, and that's all I got to say. It's very important. And I thank you for the services of citizens, but one thing you guys remember, one thing. That sign says, "We heard to serve. We serve the people, not ourselves," okay, guys? And just remember that. It's not about our egos. It's not about what we do. It's about the personal interest of the city of Selma, what direction we go. And we got to move it forward, guys. It's a positive direction. We have a great staff right now with fire and police are moving forward, city manager, engineering department. Our clerk down over there, Raina down there, she's a multitask person. I admire her. You know, and you guys, I got to tell you guys, this is a very serious situation right now. We, you'd have to step to the plate like a dream team, guys. And I, I'll be watching you guys. Trust me. Don't, don't kid yourself. Avalos is going to be watching all you guys. I'll call you on it. I don't care if you're the mayor, the city manager, I'm going to call you guys on it. If you do something wrong, okay? Trust me. And I thank you for the residents that helped me get elected all those years. I thank, and I will continue watching from the outside, and now I'm a citizen, so I can voice more opinion than listening now. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's, there's no cake involved in this one, right?
To the members of the public that are watching, I do apologize for the short delay. We were ushering in Mayor Robertson's group. We are continuing with the precautions of COVID-19. So we do allow for a small audience that is 20% of our occupancy. So we have now allowed Mayor Robertson's group to step in. And with that, the next part of our council meeting is going to be the presentation of oath of office to our newly elected Mayor Scott Robertson. As we discussed earlier, this is the first time in Selma history that we have elected our mayor. With that, Mayor Robertson, I ask you to please raise your right hand and please respond with "I do" when I'm done. I also present to you the certificate of election for Scott Robertson, Mayor Robertson.
Thank you. We're going to have longer comments afterwards, but I just want to thank the people who showed up tonight, came out. You were so instrumental in this election. I really, really appreciate all your efforts. Each and every one of you is so close to me, and I really appreciate everything. We're going to move our town forward, just like we talked about. We're going to stick to the platform of public safety and economic development, with the goal being making our city a better place to live, more livable, and making it a better place to be. So with that, if everybody would come up, we'll take a quick picture.
For our viewers that are watching, I just ask for your patience as we will begin to usher in the next group. Again, thank you for our viewers. Please be patient with us. We are just waiting for our next group to come in, and we continue to sanitize and keep with the precautions of COVID-19. Thank you for your patience. I now welcome Councilmember Blanca Mendoza Navarro. This is Councilmember Mendoza Navarro. I ask you to raise your right hand and please respond with "I do" when I'm done. Councilmember Mendoza Navarro, I'd also like to present to you the certificate of election for District One. Congratulations.
And I just want to thank my family for coming tonight. I wish, if we weren't in COVID, this room probably would be full because I have a lot of people that I am just really grateful for helping me, and the community for voting for me, our district. I just have a lot of people that I want to thank. I have a lot, my, I especially have my elementary school teachers in mind today. Mrs. Anita Reese, Ms. Barone, Teresa Barone, Ms. Vilgus, and just most recently, I just reconnected with Ms. Thurston. She's 91 years old, and she told me something that I didn't realize that's who made me, is that don't ever let anybody tell you what you can't do. So there's nothing you can't do. So I just want to thank just every, I just have a long list of people to thank, but thank you again for this opportunity.
I just ask the viewers to be patient as we sanitize the area, and we ask our next group to come in. Thank you for your continued patience. Councilmember Cho, please raise your right hand and please respond with "I do" when I am done. Councilmember Cho, at this time, I present to you the certificate of election for District Number Four. Congratulations. Right in your family, and of course, if you want.
Yes. I'd like to thank my family and my supporters, my team chose here. We had a really good, where, like I say, I'm new at this, and we actually learned a lot so far. We got to meet a lot of people in Selma, in our district, and so I really had some really good support, and I feel, I feel it. So it's a good thing. So hopefully, they're believing in me. I'm going to be able to make a difference. Okay? Thank you.
You can sit just right next door, right here.
I'm District Two? I didn't even know. I don't want to take this chair. This is not, it's not. No, it's not.
There are all this. I'd like to thank our viewers for your continued patience. Please bear with us as we sanitize for our incoming council members. Thank you for your continued patience.
Everybody ready? Okay? We're in a hurry. Is your, is your mic on, councilperson? It should be green. There you go.
There it is.
Everybody's mic on? Okay.
Good item 1F on your agenda, Mr. Mayor. Election of the Mayor Pro Tem. Put to our newly adopted, relatively newly adopted ordinance 1 hyphen 7 hyphen 1. The ordinance is to have made it onto your website. So let me, the pertinent part of the ordinance so that we all know what, the ordinance reasons follows. The office of the Mayor Pro Tem shall be for a term of two years. Every even year on the first regular meeting of the City Council in December, or upon certification of the election results, whichever is later, the City Council shall select one of its members as Mayor Pro Tem. The Mayor Pro Tem position, they'll be held by the City Council member receiving a majority vote of the City Council. Any City Council person may nominate, and if seconded, the City Council shall vote on the selection of one of its members as Mayor Pro Tem. Simple nomination and selection process. And in order to do this properly, Mr. Mayor, I kind of need to assume your authority as the presiding officer, but just for a moment.
There is.
And having, having done that, I will simply announce that the floor is now open for nominations.
I will nominate Councilperson Gera as Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll second it.
All the roll.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gera.
Yes.
Councilmember Cho. Councilmember Mendoza Navarro. Councilmember Treheu.
Make a motion to put Bev Cho as Mayor Pro Tem.
I second it.
You have a motion and a second? May I call the roll?
All the roll, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Treheu.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro. Councilmember Cho. Councilmember Gera.
No.
Mayor Robertson.
No. Motion passes. Councilmember Cho is now Mayor Pro Tem Cho. Congratulations. With that, we will move on to comments from the City Council. We three newly inducted council members and mayor got to say a couple of brief comments, but now, we're going to go in line, and we're just going to go, we're going to have everybody do, make some longer comments, if you'd like. We'll start with Councilmember Mendoza Navarro. We'll go with one through four, and then the mayor.
Well, one, one very important person I didn't get to thank during this process, and I think I've just been thanking them this whole time, is I thank God for giving me the opportunity to be here, and I'm really excited about, you know, representing District One and our city overall, and I'm very excited to work with this team. And I know that we're going to be, you know, doing a lot of great things, and we're going to get a lot of, it's going to be hard work because, you know, as, as Councilmember Avalos stated, we are in a pandemic, and so we need to make sure that we're thoughtful and safe and just get our city back running and get our citizens, you know, back running. And I know we have a lot of work ahead of ourselves, and I'm not, I'm not a stranger to hard work, and so I'm ready to hit the ground running. And so I got my running shoes, and I'm ready to go. I'm excited.
You. Let's try.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate all three. I'd like to congratulate the Mayor Robertson. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Bev Cho. I'd like to congratulate Councilman, Councilwoman Navarro. I see that the community has elected for a good change, and I congratulate the mayor again, and this council is, is a reflection of our community. Yeah, I'm so proud of our community for coming out and voting. It was a historic vote count that represents that our community is wanting change, and I ask you all members to be prepared, and let's elevate the game here, let's set the tone, let's set the bar a little higher, and let's get to work. Again, congratulate to all you, all you that were elected, and let's move on.
Gera.
I too would like to congratulate our newly elected mayor, and also I would like to wish our new Mayor Pro Tem Bev Cho and Blanca Navarro. And I just want to tell everybody, you know, good luck, because again, this is going to be a challenging year, especially with the pandemic, and we're going to continue to move forward. You know, we have some great staff, and we've done a lot even during the pandemic, and I think this is going to, you know, of course, give us another challenge, but we're going to move forward, and we're going to do this. So again, I welcome our new staff and the new council members. Again, good luck. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Congratulations, Mayor Robertson. Same thing, my goal is basically to see the city do well, and I think we have a good group here, and united to go toward the city, take care of our city, you know, watch it grow, make sure it's safe, you know, let our people be proud of being in the city again, and that's basically what.
You. Okay, wrote mine down. The people of Selma have spoken, and they want change. Change with the new mayor, with two new council members, including our newest Pro Tem. Congratulations. For the first time, we Selma citizens get to elect our mayor, and I'm honored to be Selma's first elected mayor. The voters have also voted to ensure that we get to elect our own mayor from now on. My election was supremely a team effort. So many worked together to make this election happen, and I'm going to thank everybody because I didn't have my list together when we were down there. So here we go. I want to thank my wife Rose, who never stopped believing in our hometown, my sister-in-law Sarah, my campaign manager Jose Moreno, the Selma Police Officers and Selma Firefighters Association, my sister-in-law Lette, who held a sign with me past 8:00 PM on election night, my sign buddy Mark Alves, who helped to hang all those banners you saw around town, my brother-in-law Mondo, who provided towing assistance at a critical moment, my goddaughter Bianca and her husband Anthony, who are always there with support, Yolanda Torres, who provided many inspirational motivational talks with the message to hang in there despite all the negativity and the sign thefts, that the effort to elect our own mayor into a run- a run for mayor was worth it. But most of all, I want to thank you, the people, for all your input, which challenged me to, it challenged me to confront and talk about the real issues that our town faces. You set my agenda. My platform is based on the issues you told me are the most important to you and your lives. In order to move our town forward in terms of public safety, economic development and quality of life, we must face the issues we have, not avoid them or sweep them under the rug. It's not negativity to bring up problems when recognition is the first step in problem solving. A big issue for our town's future growth and for our collective conscience is homelessness. We must equitably take care of our Selma homeless while not becoming the destination place for homeless from other cities. Selma, I'm going to take this off if you don't mind, Selma must continue to take a hard line on not allowing illegal homeless encampments when so many of you have told me they harm our city while also finding solutions for those Selma homeless who need shelter. Crime and blight accompany these illegal homeless encampments and we will not allow it. If we don't actively select shelter programs, the homeless will actively select our town. Our town should be known for its rich cultural and artistic diversity, its business-friendly atmosphere, its shopper-friendly downtown. Selma is happening right before our eyes. COVID has really showed us how near and dear to our hearts are all the events that we have missed over the last 11 months. I can't wait for Nagger Kirtan Festival and the parade showing the generosity of the Sikh people with the chopper dropping flower petals from the sky, the Tejano Festival bringing generations of families together for a good cause, pony rides at fundraisers and the wine of the zipper at the Raisin Festival ushering in summer. Congratulations to the new council members, Mayor Pro Tem Bev Cho and Blanca Mendoza Navarro, and thank you to Jim Avalos and Louis Franco for your service to the people through your actions on the City Council. The people have spoken and they want us on council to work together to continue the changes occurring for the better in our city. And I challenge the new council members to remember the citizens elected you, not to work someone else's agenda, but rather get experience on the council and listen to your common sense and the people who put you here. We are both at a diff, we are at a both difficult and exciting time for Selma. We have the first new park after 31 years to present to our youth, a new fire station to build and a local economy to assist in a post-COVID world. As Lin Manuel Miranda said in Hamilton, legacy, what is legacy? It is planting seeds in a garden we will never see. We council members must prepare our city for the generations who come after us, not just prepare, but ensure that our actions are informed by a vision to present those who come after us with the gift of a city that has grown logically and intentionally, always with the goal and ideal of livability and enjoyment for our citizens who work hard, pay their taxes and have the right to expect safety for their families in a clean city. As Ralph Waldo Emerson said in his essay Self-Reliance, "The only person you are destined to become is the person you decide to be." It is up to each of us to contribute to the vision of our town by doing our part to improve our city, to support our first responders who are on the front lines of keeping our citizens safe, to pick up the trash you see on the road, to give to your favorite nonprofit, not necessarily with money, but also with your time, to set the example for those who are watching you by how you live. Actions speak so much louder than words. Some have asked me why I ran for the first elected mayor position during such uncertain times. My response is now is the time when our city needs leadership more than ever, leaders who are united in bringing safety and prosperity to the people of Selma. Let's get started in this new chapter of our city's history and move our town forward together. Thank you. And with that, we will conclude council comments and. We've got this in our. Agenda here where we can take a break. Would everybody like to take just a few minutes or? What would you, what would you like? Can you, or take a break? Roll on. Okay, all right. With that, we will move on to special presentations, non-scheduled. We will move on to the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion, by one roll call vote. For the purposes of discussion, any council member may have any item from the consent calendar removed. The council can then approve the entire consent calendar by one roll call vote. Does anyone have any items they would like to have removed from the consent calendar tonight?
I'd like to remove H.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve 2A through 2G.
I would like to remove items C and D. You want to restate that motion?
I'd make a motion to approve 2A, B through E.
Okay, there.
F and H.
Okay. No one had any other items they wanted to take off tonight? Okay. We have a motion to approve items 2A, B, E, F and G. Call the roll, please.
We had a motion, Mayor Robertson, can you let me know who made the second? I do apologize, I missed that.
Councilperson Gara seconded that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Treheu.
Yes.
Councilmember Gara.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Epstein.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
If you're going to call me, I'd say yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Cho, do you, can you turn your mic on?
I said yes.
Thank you. Mayor Robertson.
Yes. We'll, since C and D, I'll start, I'll start. Okay, item C. Page 35, and that is the consideration of a resolution awarding contract to Dawson Malden LLC for the Nebraska Avenue rehabilitation project. So, City Manager, that, the source of the funds for that was the block grant? Is this the same project we voted on to rehab Nebraska?
Assistant City Manager Moreno is also on the line if you wanted to add anything else to that.
Sure, I'd be happy to take that. This item itself is, is not community block grant, it's actually a different funding source. We pulled it up right now, I think it's ST.
STBG.
Yeah, it's a grant fund, it's, so this project will actually, we switch it from a different funding source to, or actually to, to install a sewer line underneath the, the street at Nebraska Avenue. The sewer line will not be connected, but it will be installed.
So two things are going to happen, there's going to be the road getting resurfaced and a sewer line coming in?
Correct, but the sewer line will not be connected, it actually needs further improvements downstream.
And with the awarding of this job, when is that going to get started and what's the estimated completion date for that?
With the contract that's been selected, they're, they're requesting to push it off until January.
A lot of people ask me when that Nebraska's getting resurfaced, it's a great thing.
Didn't we talk about this a while back and proved it, knowing that we would not have it structured, just?
Yeah, we were, I thought we were looking at March, but the world turned upside down. Anybody have any other issues with C? Okay, 2D. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement with health management associations to provide consultation services for the IGT program along with a cooperative agreement between the City of Colinga, City of Dinuba, City of Kingsburg, City of Sanger, City of Selma, split the cost of these services. So for the new council members, this is something that, that feeds the ambulance fund, the intergovernmental transfer. And this is the contract that hires a consultant who kind of directs traffic between where those IGT funds go for the cities. And a couple of months ago, about four months ago actually, we, we got this as a council and we saw that there was no professional liability requirement in the contract. So when you have a consultant, that's your big exposure, right? You don't want them, if they mess up, that's big money for the city and that would cause serious damages to the city if they messed up with their rendering of their professional services. So hadn't, didn't see it for a long time, saw it this time, looked at the contract and really appreciate staff, appreciate our assistant city manager and our city manager following up on this and putting this in, thank you for protecting the city. Thank you for, Fire Chief, because you handle the IGT. So thank you for, for going front and center on that. Thank you, Chief Peterson.
Absolutely, it did take a few months, all the other cities, it's my understanding all the other cities had some comments as well, so.
Everybody had their.
To compile everything and get the contract put together.
That sounds great, thanks for sticking to it and, and making it happen, appreciate that.
I have just a quick question on that. In reviewing the wording in here, it, it looks like Sanger administers the report that is sent to each city. Now that city, well, we receive the report, who reviews that report?
Myself and Isaac Will from Finance.
Okay.
Will confirm, the report basically is a breakdown of the costs for each city and what we're spending for the services.
Exactly.
For them while they're, while they're putting all of our contract information for the IGT and, and all those dollars, putting all that information together.
So it is reviewed in case, I mean, because we'd like to capture every, you know, every dollar we can, making sure that we're getting paid for those services.
Right, we, we take a look at, each month, we get a breakdown of the hours that they spent working for each department and then we analyze how those dollars were broke down and make sure everything is in line with, with the contract and how it's supposed to be.
Item H.
Item H, okay, page 75, just a couple of questions, I just wanted a question, just the first one, wasted checks, what does that mean, Isaac?
So what happens if we have a printing error, maybe a paper grammar or something to that extent? Our accounting system doesn't allow us to reprint check numbers, we actually had to turn around and void them if there's an error in that, in that sense, so we had to just remove that whole sequence, void it all out and we had to start again. Usually it's just jamming the paper or something to that extent.
Okay, and then just down a ways, check number 76315 and it's EKC Enterprises Inc., Council Chamber, AB Systems, is that like audio visual?
That's exactly what it is, it's the new audio visual system that we installed to try and get that feed, feedback cleared up.
Okay.
Completely remove that old switchboard that's in there and condensed it to a new upgraded system.
And then just one more on the next page. I can't read the check number because it's got a hole in it, but it's State Water Resources, annual permit fee for 8,952, what is that for?
It's just our annual permit, I'm sorry, you don't know, you're not sure which number it was?
Yeah, because it's.
Looks like 76370. 76370.
Okay, probably.
Yeah, it's just our annual water resource board permit, it's just annual.
That's paid once a year, right?
That's correct.
That's it?
I have a couple of items, 76304, consolidated electrical lighting for Veterans Plaza, is that being reimbursed by Post 12?
I believe that one is, Shane, can you confirm that, please?
I can confirm, yes, American Legion already agreed to pay for that.
And I wanted to say, got it, and I wanted to say thank you, use this opportunity to say thank you to the American Legion Post 12, one of the oldest American Legion organizations in the state of California, right here in our hometown of Selma, for donating all of this lighting and so many other items to our Veteran Plaza. We are really going to turn Lincoln Park into a first-class Veterans Plaza, which is going to be a great attraction for veterans and their families and other people from all around to come to Selma at our focal point in Selma off of Second Street. So thank you, Commander Alisio, if you're watching, I want to say thank you for you and all your organization is doing for the Plaza, can't wait for the statues to come in and for our, our Memorial Day ceremony this year. Okay, another question I have is 76312, the Building Inspector Service, Juan Cruz Diaz. Do we have a new building inspector?
No, he's a consultant, we, if we have the building inspectors out or ill and we have some inspections that really need to be done, we will call in this consultant to fill that list so that we can continue to get those building permits inspected and moving forward.
Thanks. Your dog agreed with that?
Yes.
I think he wants food. Check number 76320, Fire Recovery, no, no, I'm sorry, Fresno County Tax Collector, Property Tax Sewer, do we pay property taxes in Selma?
We actually pay property tax for one of our properties is not in the city limits, but really what you're paying for in majority of them is going to be your sewer, because your sewer is filed to the tax roll, so we still have to pay for it.
We wouldn't pay SKF, that would go to the county?
Yeah, we don't, we don't pay SKF directly.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any items they would like to discuss from the check register? Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve items C, D and H?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gara.
Yes.
Councilmember Treheu.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes, with that, we will move on from the consent calendar to our first item of business tonight, which is a public hearing item. It's a continued item, consideration and necessary action on resolution declaring an abandoned sign at 1505 Second Street in Selma, California, an illegal on-premises advertising display and a public nuisance and ordering the property owner to abate the nuisance.
Mayor members of the council, you will notice that the staff reports and resolutions for this item and for items four and five are all identical except for one thing and that is the address of the property that we're talking about. In all three cases, we're talking about a, what is commonly known as a freeway sign that no longer advertises any active business and in fact, in all three cases, they are just a steel frame visible from the freeway and they are no longer used for advertising of any sort. These are continued hearings on all three cases and. First public hearing on this item, we heard from the owners of all three properties and each of these three properties indicated a desire and a plan to move forward, to reestablish sign and so we continue. Day so that they could return and report to us on their progress. On this particular item, which is 1505 Second Street, there was a representative that appeared at the last hearing and indicated that they intended to reestablish the sign and we expected them and we conveyed to them that we expected them to return to us today and let us know their progress in that fact. So this is a public hearing matter. In the event that you move forward because you, you have not received the promised progress report, this is essentially a two-step process. First step is to simply adopt the resolution, which simply declares that sign to be a public nuisance and orders the, the owner to take it down. We serve the owner with notice of the action that you have taken and we set a date, which I would suggest should be January 4th, for a further hearing at which the owner of the property that has been ordered to remove the sign can appear and object to your adoption of the resolution and the order to remove the sign. That objection should typically be in the nature of an indication that he or she is going to reestablish the sign and put it. Ended for. So this is a public hearing, Mayor, the only, the only person who actually receives no. So this is a public hearing, Mayor. Uh, the only, the only person who actually receives notice is the property owner. And hopefully we'll, we'll hear from the property owners.
Okay. With that, we'll, uh, bring the matter back to council. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Yes, I have a question. Um, if we're giving them till January fourth, is there an issue with us continuing this item until the next board meeting? Can we continue these items?
If you adopt the resolution, uh, and you'll have to adopt the resolution with, uh, some amendments because there are improper dates in there. Uh, but I, I selected January fourth because typically, uh, we close up shop at the end of your first meeting in December. Uh, we don't have a second meeting in December and your following meeting would be on January fourth. Uh, the date of January fourth is set by the resolution as you would amend it. And that would be the date that we would provide to the property owner as the date of the hearing that he go up and tell us why we shouldn't have that thing taken down.
Um, City Attorney Costanzo, do we have a, can you make a comment, City Manager?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, members, members of council. We actually typically don't have a meeting, the first meeting in January either. If you, if you want to, we can, but, uh, if we want to go by our normal schedule, it'd be the second meeting in January.
It's usually the second Tuesday, right? Because isn't it MLK Day on Monday?
That's correct. So it'd be January nineteenth.
Yeah. So the nineteenth would be the next council meeting after this one.
Correct.
Uh, unless we have a special meeting in the meantime.
Then, then you would, you would want to set that hearing for the night.
Okay.
So the reason I asked for the question is, um, if we're, if we've given them proper notice and we've given them, you know, plenty of time. I think if we make a, make it an action item and a public hearing at the same time, wouldn't we just be able to take care of it all together at the same time?
Uh, you normally would be able to, but these are signs and their removal is governed by specific provisions. Professionals Code, which essentially require us to go through those two steps. We have to first declare it's a nuisance, order them to take it down. And as we give them notice of the, of what we have done, or what you have done, we also give them notice of a public hearing, uh, that is prescribed by law. They are able to appear at and object to what you are proposing. That, that's the only reason for the second step. It, it is.
And this is the only one that we've received in from, or we've only, um, this is the only one that we've received comments from the owner from?
No, we received comments from the owner on all three of these at our, at our first public hearing, which was November second. Uh, and we're just hoping that, uh, uh, they're going to show back up, uh, bite us with a status report progress in.
So we could have a meeting on the twenty-first?
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth, nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
I, I'd like to make a motion to, uh.
Um, no, it's a public hearing, so, pardon me, I don't mean to interrupt, but it's a public hearing.
Get to a point where I make a motion to table three to eleven, Neil? What point can I get to a motion to make a motion to table item three to eleven?
Uh, after the, the public hearing is, is, is conducted, if we have people, uh, show up and.
We're going to do it, we're going to do it legally. So it's a public hearing item. Um, we've, the, just the process for the new council members. When it's a public hearing, you, you ask for the comments from the council, then you open, you have to open up to the public. And then when it's done, you say, I, I closed the public hearing and then bring it back to council. And then we decide what we want to do, whether it's, you know, continue it or make a motion.
Getting to is, do I have to do the public hearing first and then do the action? Or can I do the action and, or I mean, the public hearing? Go ahead.
Right. And I think the attorney, the city attorney said we got to open it up to the public for public input before we can weigh in as a council. So with that, I will.
Mayor, I, I've, uh, I'm having the clerk, uh, pass out what was received from the owner of, of the property at fifteen oh five Second Street, which is the item we're talking about. This is a letter of intent.
The first time we're receiving this?
Pardon? I was just reading the letter and I just not, uh, real sure.
It's dated twelve, six.
Here is to be proposing to reestablish the sign within. May I read this letter of intent?
All right. The, this letter of intent is valid for a period of six months or ninety days after the brand offer letter date, whichever date is soonest. So what's the brand offer letter date?
That is apparently a letter we don't have.
Okay. It, it's the soonest, so that's material. So it'd be nice to know when that is, because that might be sooner than six months.
So thi- this really does not tell you much of anything, other than, uh, this person who owns the sign is likely with somebody that's proposing to.
Yeah.
Establish it.
This is between him and Chevron, right? This is between the owner and the.
Between the owner and.
The brand.
Whoever this person is that's, uh, name is on there.
Are we on, are we on public hearing for comments for people?
Um, good question. So with that, I'll open the, um, public hearing to the public. City Clerk, I open the public hearing.
Hi caller, labeled as star one mark. Do you have any comments for council?
Uh, yes, I do.
May I have your name for the record, please?
Yes, Shahar Jahan.
Thank you. Please proceed with your comments.
Thank you. Uh, first I'd like to say a good evening to the council members. I'd like to congratulate to the new council members and the mayor. Um, we are working right now with the major, um, company that brands gas stations. And we in the preliminary stage of trying to sign a contract and do new construction for building a gas station. We were in the process of trying to acquire a home that was behind the property. That way we can have a more space to build a bigger store. But we've been a little bit unsuccessful in trying to contact the owner and acquire the house. So that's some, one of the reason we didn't have chance to give you guys like a site plan. But, uh, right now we waiting from the company that we want to sign the contract with for the gas company. And then they're, they're going to give us more input and more ideas on how to, uh, develop it. And we also have to do, uh, traffic counts to see how much traffic is going to go in there because they have requirements, uh, before you actually start the construction. But we are trying to work the fastest and the hardest way to get something going for this property. Because, um, we were trying to brand Chevron, but there was already a site in the area that was doing it. So that kind of delayed us and we had to find another brand. So right now we're just at the point where we're trying to, uh, get a, uh, get a contract with some major oil company to help us, uh, develop the site and eventually put my gas station there.
Mr. Gaham is, um, what's your, um, the letter of intent here?
The letter of intent is, um, that's signed with that oil company when you want to put a certain brand. Example, if we want to put, uh, Valero brand, we have to sign the letter of intent. And that letter is sent to the major oil company. And then they, uh, allow the dealer to give us the license to, uh, open that brand up in that location. So that's like the, one of the first steps to, to, um, to do when you, uh, constructing a new gas station. And we're already working with this company for another gas station that's across the street, uh, Star One Market, where we're going to put maybe a Sinclair brand fuel right there. So we have.
Pardon me, what is, what is the, the brand offer letter date? Is it the same as the letter of intent we're looking at?
I believe so, yes. Yeah.
So both are, both are twelve, six. So this letter is valid for, for six months for you to negotiate?
Uh, they, they say six months. Yes, sir. They usually say six months. That's the, that's the letter, the off, the six months allows you to negotiate, you know, how much money they're going to give you, what kind of rebates on the gas and the fuel. But usually it doesn't mean that you take the whole six months. Sometimes it, it doesn't take six months. Sometimes you can have an offer in thirty days, sixty days. But they, they make the LOI, the letter of intent for six months. That's what they make, they put in the, the letter.
Elsewhere? Do you have a question? Oh, okay. Um, so what you're saying tonight, Mr. Gaham, from understanding is you need at least six months to explore this, this, um, this venture with, uh, with Valero before you'll be able to know if you are going to be putting up a sign where that blank Stonehenge-like monolith is right now on your property?
Yeah, I mean, it can take up to six months. Right now with COVID nineteen and all these things going on, we not sure if it's going to, it's going to be six months or maybe earlier than that. But we willing to, maybe after the meeting, talk with the city. If, if we believe it's going to take longer than six months, we willing to work with the city to paint it, to make it look nice. Maybe the city, they could put sign up there as welcome to Selma. You know, we don't want the sign to make this, we, we understand your guys' view. You want the city to look nice and people get off the exit, they don't want to see old sign. We understand that. And we, we willing to work with the city to, I don't know, renovate the sign to make it look nice. Because the, the sign is very expensive and it adds a lot of value to the property. If we're going to construct a gas station, it doesn't make sense for us to remove the sign that's almost maybe worth eighty to a hundred thousand and to put another new sign. So we just trying to work with you, work with the city and to, you know, have some kind of resolution. That way we don't lose our sign. And, and at the same time, if we build a station, which we're trying to do, you know, we can utilize the sign. But we will still try to make the sign look nice. If you guys want us to paint it, you know, I don't know, anything is, is possible, you know, with the sign.
Mr. Gaham, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Can we, can you get that sign completed, looking nice, within the next thirty days?
Uh, I would have to contact some company, you know, and to get price on painting and, because the, the lift machine is very expensive to lift it up and to, you know, to fix the sign. It costs a lot of money. But I could, I can discuss this with, with my partner and, and see if we could do something, you know, if, if that's what the city is, is wanting. But if you guys do us a favor and give us a little bit of time, you know, we, maybe we can have some projects started on this, you know?
We're still in the public hearing section, so we can't really discuss this now, but thank you, Mr. Gaham. We'll talk about it in the council. Yeah, please, please stay on the line. Um, or, City Clerk, is there anyone else on the line who was just to give their input?
Hi caller, ending in two, one, five. Your line is open. Do you have any comments for council regarding this agenda item? If so, please dial star six. Mayor Robertson, we have no other callers on the line and we have no emails.
Okay. Thank you, City Clerk. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to bring it back to council for council discussion. Um, does anyone have any input on Mr. Gaham's appeal for more time? Um, City Manager, do you have any input on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My understanding is that this process has taken place in the past and we had been told that there would be progress on development as well. And then things kind of fell through. So if the council would like to add some time, I would recommend that we keep this in increments where we can keep on and see progress being made by the property owners. So thirty, sixty days, that type of continual check-in on progress being made.
What's a reasonable amount of time for the sign owner to be able to either get a deal with, actually show us something in writing? And the proof in the pudding is they apply for a permit. Is that right? To remop, to rehab the sign?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, the application of a permit would definitely be a, a very significant step in progress.
And even if they rehab the sign, they have to apply for a permit? If they're going to put welcome to Selma on it, is that correct?
I, I believe so, and I will double check on that.
Okay. Um, so.
Yes, I would say they would have to do that for a sign.
If we approve this tonight, we would be approving, declaring this a nuisance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But it wouldn't mean it's a nuisance tonight. It means we would come back a couple of meetings from now, because this would be for an ordinance, right? So you can't ever have, you can't make an ordinance by having two meetings back to back. You got to do them spaced. You have to separate them by at least one meeting. Is that correct?
It's just by a resolution. It's just that the Business and Professions Code gives the sign owner two opportunities to, to, uh, address the council in response to this type of action. As it's just the procedure that the law establishes. So your, your options here are to either pick a, a date. I would suggest, uh, January nineteen would be a suitable date for the property owner to show us at least some, uh, progress toward either establishing the temporary welcome to Selma sign or painting the sign, doing something or acquiring, uh, this, uh, interest in the, uh, commercial oil company that will us, allow him to establish a.
So shows, shows some meaningful progress by January nineteenth. I mean, it's been years and years and years. We, we, I think the city, per the city managers, heard this over and over that they're working on it and it just hasn't happened. We need to, we need to contin, we need to provide that incentive for them to keep moving forward.
City manager is, is suggesting that you keep this on a tight timeline so that you can keep on top of it and ensure that these people are actually progressing, uh.
Okay. Does council agree with that? What does council think?
Well, I, I was thinking if we give a timeline, maybe do a thirty day and, you know, we could call a special meeting if we're giving them thirty days. Um, show us what the progress is on that. That way, like, you know, you mentioned that we would keep them on a very tight timeline to tell us, this is where we're at. I applied for the application. I have the permit or whatever they're doing. So maybe we call a special meeting.
That's, that's certainly an option that you have.
It might be a little tight though, right? Because didn't he say it was kind of tough for him to make thirty, thirty days?
Are we still on, um, public hearing or where we at?
We're back. We're back. We closed the public hearing. We're back to the council.
At a special meeting thirty days from today, it would be, uh, I believe, very.
Six.
Seventh.
Seven. Okay, so.
So that's.
That doesn't, I don't know if that gives him enough time. I think he said thirty days wasn't enough. He's gone twenty years. What, what's another twelve days, you know, till our council meeting on the nineteenth?
But he would have to come back with.
With something tangible, or, or we could just, yeah, we could just put this on hold till the nineteenth and then say, if you don't come back by the nineteenth, we're just going to declare it a nuisance and then when we're meeting and the sign gets, gotta take the sign out. And I don't think he wants to lose the sign.
Yeah, no, and it, yeah, it doesn't make sense. So I, I would agree that we give time to, a very tight deadline.
Would we continue that until the nineteenth?
Going to the nineteenth.
Are you making a motion to continue it till the nineteenth? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
I think there was a tie for second, but I'll go with Councilmember Gara?
Yes.
Councilmember Treheal?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho? Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes, and uh, thank you to Mr. Graham for, for calling in tonight and giving us your input. We look forward to hearing from you again at our next council meeting on January nineteenth. The next public hearing item is, sounds familiar, a continued item, consideration and necessary action on resolution declaring an abandoned sign at sixteen thirty, Second Street, Selma, California. Any legal off, on-premises advertising display, any public nuisance and ordering the property owner to abate the nuisance.
Mayor members of the council, my report on this would be precisely the same report that I gave you previously. Don't need me to do. Uh, this is for sixteen thirty, uh, Second Street and I would uh, note that I have a letter from the owner for sixteen thirty-five Second Street. We had the letter of intent from the previous one, uh, but I don't believe we've received anything on this one, so perhaps the.
Nice if we could get these ahead of time, credit.
We, we do not have any letter on this one and hopefully the, the owner is there, so when you open up the. Outside.
That'll bring it back to council, are there any comments from the council before we open the matter to the public? With that, I'll open the matter to the public, the public hearing is now open. City clerk, do we have anyone wishing to weigh in on this topic?
We have no emails at this time, and let me open the lines up. I have no callers regarding this agenda item, I have a couple of callers for the next agenda item.
Okay, so with that, I will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to council. Um, does the council wish to, do we, is the council need to proceed the same way that we, that we voted on in the previous one, where the owner actually called in?
Not at all. Uh, we, we expected the owner to reappear at this hearing, we, we made that clear to him or her uh, November second, uh, and there has been a failure to appear. If you look at page eighty-five through eighty-six of your packet, you will see the resolution uh, that we are proposing with respect to this one. This is simply the resolution that uh, declares it a nuisance and orders it to be taken down, but sets a public hearing for a later date. I would uh, I would propose that you amend this resolution to simply change uh, the dates that appear on the notice to remove illegal advertising display from no, second day of November twenty twenty in the first line and to uh, today's date. And then you change the December seven twenty twenty date in the very last line of that notice to January nineteen twenty twenty. And you could adopt that uh, resolution as amended. Hailed notice of all of this precisely in the form as it's set out in the resolution. And if he fails to appear on January nineteen, fails to provide uh, sufficient grounds for you to refrain from having the thing removed, I, I would suggest that you pretty lean have it removed through your own.
If I understand you correctly, this would be not the final step before the sign's declared a nuisance and he has to get rid of it. This is the next to final step, there's still one more chance for the owner and maybe this would get the owner's attention and they would come back to council and have some action, an action plan.
That would be my hope, yes.
Council, does anyone have any input on this? We go ahead and, I mean, no one's even stepping up on this to even call in, I mean.
Your, your other option is, is to just treat it as uh, uh, you treated the last one and just move it to the nineteenth back up then and hopefully we, in the meantime, I would uh, guess that we serve a notice uh, on the owner telling him or her that expected you to appear and you didn't. Definitely need you to appear on the nineteenth and let us know what's going on uh, with respect to your activities uh, in hitting this sign re.
But is that giving any consequences? That's just saying once again, hey, we really don't want you to, you know, blow us off, we want you to actually put it, you know, do something with the sign.
We could tell the person that if he fails to show. Definitely recommend to the council that they adopt the resolution declaring it a nuisance and start the process of having it removed.
Okay, is everybody okay with that? I mean, it gives them another chance, but it says pretty clearly, if they don't have a plan by the next meeting, we're gonna vote to declare it a nuisance. Um, is, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion. To continue it till the nineteenth. And does that include a letter from the city stating the intention of the city council to?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
And uh, surprise them exactly what we've.
And you'll send a copy of that letter to the council so we can see, thank you.
Just to clarify, we're sending him a letter that he has until the nineteenth to either say what he's gonna do or it's gonna be removed. Or we'll go to the next step to remove it.
The next step of declaring it a nuisance, right?
Otherwise declare it to be a nuisance and order it to be removed. And I won't point out to him that he gets a second hearing in that letter.
Call the roll, please.
Council member Guerra.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes.
Council member Mendoza Navarro.
Yes.
Council member Trahill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
Yes.
Okay, uh, deja vu, number five, continued item, consideration and necessary action on resolution declaring an abandoned sign at sixteen thirty-five, Second Street, Selma, California. Any legal? On, okay.
In writing.
Okay.
And he is effectively, as I read this, asking for sixty to a hundred and eighty days, basically three months. I'm sorry. A, a range for uh, questions with the regarding potential use. Different from one he's essentially proposing to sell it. The sign's still there. Does have a, a certain amount of value. Asking you to hold off on doing anything for a period of up to six.
Thank you, does council have any comments on Mr. Tostado's letter? Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing. And I will make a quick comment before the city clerk gets back there to see if anyone's there. A lot of pretty um, vague verbs in this letter, right? We may, we were discussing a sale of the property. I mean, it's not very concrete. And with that, I'll ask city clerk, is there anyone on the line to comment on this matter?
I, I see a couple of uh, com, uh, names. Chris Norton, I see you on the line, I do believe this is your agenda item, do you have any comments for council, your line is open?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Perfect, thank you, may I have your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Christopher Norton, N O R T O N. I am actually internal counsel for the, the property owner. We also have Jim Tostado on the line with us, who was the author of the letter.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, council members, for, for taking the time to meet with us this evening. I just wanted to give you a report, I know, I hear, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I hear what you're saying. That's, we, we draft these letters in a way to try to give us as much flexibility, recognizing that we're living in a very challenging time and we're doing the best we can with what we have. We've, when we, when we received the, the letter from the, the, the city regarding the, the sign, we operated an Exxon um, gas station on that site for a number of years. And um, since that time, we recognize that the sign does, something needs to happen with the sign and the property. And so we've, 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 we're approaching this on a dual track. First of all, we reached out with, with, with Mr. Javier Vidrio's help. We have been um, attempting to reach uh, sign fabricators that can help us and, and the proposal, um, which we believe and what we're gonna be pricing out is putting Selma on that sign. So where you had had Exxon before, it would say Selma. And our hope, by, by doing something like that, and i- if it's, if it's economically feasible, it would allow us to, to put Selma there and tell, and give us time to then go and find a buyer, recognizing that the city needs action now. So we are in the process of, 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 of doing that, we've reached out. Mr. Vidrio has, has been kind enough to help us and he's been reaching out to sign fabricators and vendors. The challenge, as you can imagine, is, is the same for everything at this point. With the virus, i- it's, it's challenging to get people to pay attention. Uh, I know that there's others who are dealing with the same issues we are in, in the city and I don't know if they've had success with the sign fabricators, but, but we are working on this and it's something that we take seriously and, and want to, to get done. Um, at the same time, we're dual tracking this and we're looking for a buyer. The plan would be, is again, is, is, is the most likely outcome, is we would put Selma on the sign and then we would work with a buyer to purchase the, the site, recognizing again that due diligence periods and everything else have been extended into the future because of the, the pandemic. So therefore, there's a period of time that we would expect Selma to be on that sign. So that's what we're, we're in the process of doing. We would appreciate any time that you can give us to continue to, to work on this, it's something that we do take seriously. Um, we recognize there is a need for this, um, we want to work with the city on this. Uh, unfortunately, Mr. Vidrio had a, a death in the family, which was uh, unforeseen and uh, he slowed the process a little bit. But, but nevertheless, I believe if you can give us to January nineteenth, like, like what you were talking about with other owners, we would desperately and would sincerely appreciate tha- that additional time that we could work to get this done. Our expectation is, in that month period, is that if, to the extent that we can, can reach those sign fabricators, it would come back to the city with, with a plan for the sign and a proposal. Um, potential um, drawings, if we can get those finished. So that's what we would hope to accomplish by January nineteenth.
Thanks for your input. Did Mr. Tostado wish to comment tonight?
Sure, thank you, um, Jim Tostado, T O S T A D O. We, we, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. We, we do have two buyers that are also interested in the property and they would like to utilize the sign as well. The, we are just at the early stages of negotiation and um, we're speeding up the process because of the council's concern and uh, interest in the sign being um, taken care of sooner than later. So we're, that may take time because every deal takes time. But um, if the city doesn't have an interest in utilizing it for themselves, then we would also uh, continue to move forward because both of the buyer interested parties are also interested in having a sign there.
Okay, uh, Mr. Tostado, um, what do you mean if the city has an interest in utilizing the sign? In what capacity would you be um, having the city show that interest?
So uh, the city has reached out to us at uh, different points through the stage and considered utilizing the sign to actually put the letter Selma in place. And uh, the discussions were um, ones that we had over different times and no official decisions were made o- on the city's end. And so when we got the notice, we essentially resurrected those conversations and both Chris and I are, were not involved in any prior discussions. So we're coming in at, at this stage, trying to see what we can do to make that happen. And as I understand, there was a, um, some of the council members that may have uh, moved on had an interest at that time. And now we have a new council, so we haven't even had a chance to discuss any of that with the other members.
Okay, so you're saying that's an option that the city could be almost like a tenant and have the sign, utilize your sign and provide consideration for that, or would your organization be willing to provide that? That Selma sign?
In talking with Chris and others of our company, we are open to different discussions, it just uh, depends on what the costs are. And that was what we were working with Javier to try and determine what those might be. And it might be something that is gratis for some time, it might be something that, a nominal amount. It, in, in the meantime, if there was a potential purchaser that needed to utilize the sign, that might be part of the discussion too, that they accept the fact that they, for some time, Selma would be utilizing the sign.
So for the purposes of tonight, what you're saying is, um, per your attorney, Mr. Norton, you're saying you would appreciate an extension like the, the previous two sign owners received to continue the matter until January nineteenth, until you can make contact with a sign fabricator for some potential um, quotes to fabricate that Selma sign and install it, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, and last uh, meeting, it was the council instructors come back with some timeframes and that's essentially what we did.
With that, I will ask the city clerk, are there any other callers on the line for this item?
Hi caller, ending in six, six, four, your line is open. I ask that you use star six to unmute your line. Do you have any comments for council regarding this agenda item? This is for caller ending in six, six, four, your line is open. Please dial star six to unmute your line. Mayor Franco, we have, forgive me, Mayor Robertson, we have no comments, no email comments, and we have no further comments online.
Okay, thank you for that, city clerk. Um, with that, we'll bring it back, we'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to council. Um, does, would council want to afford Mr. Tostado and his attorney, Mr. Norton, the opportunity to have a little more time to come up with a fabrication quote? For the, to put a Selma sign in that location? Maybe, and then at that time, we'll probably wanna hammer it out as to, it sounds like they're leaving the door open for charging the city or demanding something from the city or requiring something from the city financially, city manager, were you hearing that too?
Yeah, that, and that was a news to me, my understanding was that this would, if they wanted to keep the sign there, that it would be uh, accommodated to have the letter Selma, the S E L M A in there um, in order to allow them to keep the sign.
But the beginning of the discussion was to just have it cleaned up. So the actual ultimate goal for the city is to clean that property up. So I know that in the previous council was talking about, hey, why don't you put Selma on there? But the actual discussion was to make sure that it was not a nuisance.
Correct.
So we correct to, we stay with the issue and for them to just clean it up, that's, that's the main goal.
To make it look nice?
Now we're gonna start paying.
So you're, you're saying that's a separate issue, the payment part?
After a while, part, yeah. Right now, our main issue is for, to give them time to either figure out what they're gonna do with it.
Okay, but it's.
What they're hearing?
I, I'm hearing two different things.
Neil, what's, what's, what's the, this hearing was to make sure that we gave them time to come back and give us a proposal.
Hearing was for them to demonstrate that they're taking the appropriate steps to reestablish the sign.
And because we've given the prop, the people in the past, the, the, the first two items, an opportunity and extension, like, let's give them another extension and see where they're at, and come back in the same date.
That's the case, and you actually gave that extension to one of the-
Fair to do that, and then the issue of remuneration will come up at the next meeting then. And I'm sure they'll discuss it with the city in the meantime, and they'll have more information for us at the next meeting.
I just have a quick question. City manager, do you remember, it was his idea to put up something that said Selma? It wasn't council's idea?
Right, it was proposed by the property owner, absolutely.
And never mentioned anything about a leaseback?
No, no, this was the first I'd, I'd heard of that.
Me too. Okay, I just want to make sure I clarify that.
Yeah, and I just wanted to also clarify to, to everybody that Javier may be facilitating by providing, you know, contacts to sign fabricators, but it is not the city's responsibility to get those estimates. So we'd be happy to facilitate-
The owner.
Correct.
And, and we're not hearing about them actually opening up anything there. They were, they're just talking about refurbishing the sign and putting Selma on it.
Right, and, and some of the things that we talked about, our staff, when we first had the conversation with the property owner, was that, you know, could it say something like, "Welcome to Selma"? But that is not what they're proposing, because that would be, that would be more fabrication. But it would clean it up to put Selma.
It would make it look nicer. That is the goal here. Okay, thank you for that. I think there was a motion by the mayor, Pro Tem, to give them till the 19th. All the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes?
Thank you. Councilmember Treu.
Yes.
Councilmember Gara.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoz Navarro.
Yes.
Mayor Robertson.
Yes. With that, is everybody good with one more public hearing item? Then we'll take a brief three-minute break after that. Okay. So the last public hearing item tonight is consideration necessary action on an extension by 10 months and 15 days of the urgency ordinance number 2020-5 as revised and amending 11-8-2 and 3 of the Selma municipal code to allow for operation of thrift stores or other stores selling used goods or merchandise.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a public hearing on extension of an urgency ordinance that you adopted on November 9. Let me point out the most important thing about this is that anything you do with respect to an urgency ordinance, including an extension of it, has to be done by a four-fifth vote of the council. You'll recall that on November 9, we adopted the urgency ordinance in response to learning that there was a thrift shop that was fully stocked and ready to go, and was just waiting on the issuance of their business license, which, which ran into some delay once we found out that our rather antiquated ordinance from 1976 prohibits thrift shops in the city of Selma unless they are operated by a nonprofit corporation, and unless they also have gone through and obtained a conditional use permit for that operation. Adopted an urgency ordinance, basically allowing thrift shops without qualification in the city of Selma. After you did that, we had a lot of discussion among staff, planning people. And there was some concern about whether or not we might experience a flood of these types of applications to establish thrift stores. And by thrift stores, I simply mean a store that sells used- So we have since amended and altered the ordinance, and our public hearing notice on this item alerts people to the fact that we have, in fact, proposed alterations to the ordinance. The alterations are simply this. No thrift shop would be able to be established within 300 feet of any other thrift shop, which addresses the concentration question. And the other addition to it would be that once there are two thrift shops in any commercial zone of the city, the third one would be required to obtain an administrative conditional use permit, which is simply a review by your community development department to determine whether or not it's going to be disruptive to the, to that neighborhood that it's proposing to be established in, and to ensure that they abide by simple requirements that we have included in the ordinance that basically do not allow the, the donation or giving of guys that they are going to sell through any pop box or anything. And it has to be done on the premises where the goods are going to be sold, or not at all. So those are the, the two additions to it. You're able to adopt these urgency ordinances in this particular context, because we're dealing with a zone, which allows us to engage in a study or review of what this particular use of property, how that might impact the overall neighborhood or zone within which it's located. One way of doing that is to gradually allow these things and see how they, how they turn out. And so that's really the theory behind this. By adopting the extension, you are extending the urgency ordinance as amended, as I've indicated, for a period of 10 months and 15 days. So that would take you roughly out to somewhere near October of next year. Or other alternative is to let the urgency ordinance expire. And that would, that would revert back to the old ordinance that prohibited anything other than a nonprofit corporation with an additional use permit to establish that kind of business in Selma. However, with respect to the one that was established while the urgency ordinance was in effect, that would have been lawfully established, and it would be grandfathered in and allowed to continue. Really have two different ways of going. And it really kind of depends on her view of how this is working out so far, I guess. It, it's just the, the, the one problem that you adopted the urgency ordinance to take care of has now taken care of itself. So that other option is available to you to just allow her. And I just want to point out that you, you do have that other option.
That'll bring the matter back to council. Are there any questions for the city attorney for his presentation? Okay, with that, I'll open the matter to the public, public hearing. City clerk, do we have anybody on the line?
Hi caller ending in six, six, four, your line is open. Do you have any comments for council regarding this agenda item? If so, please use your phone and dial star six to unmute your line. There appears to be no callers on the line, and there are no emails. Mayor Robertson.
With that, we'll close the public hearing and bring the matter back to council. Does anyone have any comments or anything they would like to say about this item?
I'd like to make a comment. I just want to ask, in regards to the thrift stores, don't we want to put on there a limit of how many thrift stores we should have and locations?
There is a, the way the amendment is written right now, there is a limit on the number of thrift stores within a given zone. So you have, you have a C1 zone, you have a C2 zone, you have a C3 zone, you have a commercial regional zone. This particular ordinance is found in those ordinances that deal with the C1 zone. And the way these ordinances are written, it will say, if you go to, for example, the C2 zone ordinance, it will say all uses that are allowed in the C1 zone are allowed in the C2 zone. And that is the same with respect to your regional zone. It's the same with respect to your C3 zone. And I believe it's also the same with respect to your M1 zones. Different animal. So it's, it's limiting them to two within a particular zone. But you can have two in the C1, C2, C3, and C4, or, you know, commercial regional.
Does the study consist of other cities? How many, what they're doing with thrift shops? I mean, what we hear from the city looks like mid-year. That's when the city is prepared to come back with the study of what other cities do about thrift stores, and what the recommendations are and what the conditions should be.
Far, we've looked at, I've looked at Fresno, Visaya, Clovis, whatever that's escaping me at the moment. And none of them have anything in their code that would prohibit a thrift store. They are written in such a way that they allow any type of retail activity anywhere in their commercial zones. And that's the case in Fresno, Visaya. And you can, you can see it's clearly the case in Clovis, they have the whole day. Doesn't seem to be regulated. Our, but we, we have lots of other cities to look at. Our ordinance acted in 1976. They can't tell you why it's there, other than, you know, rank speculation that they figured the, the, the Bill Salvation Army would be the only ones, you know, clean up the mess of the drop-off box.
Thrift stores have definitely changed since, since that time.
Times have changed, and I-
Can't really call them thrift stores anymore.
It doesn't appear, at least as far as I've gotten to this point, I have not found any city that regulates thrift stores in any way, shape, or form.
I think the original intent of the ordinance was, don't have a lot of vehicle traffic dropping things off. I mean, back in 76, I guess that was when these things were functions of like the hospital or these, you know, other nonprofits that they served, right, to raise funds. People would donate the items to these business, these nonprofits, and they would have a store, how they would raise money by selling it.
Always have that drop-off box outside of the store.
And no one wanted that drop-off.
And, you know, the thing would overflow.
Too many items.
Or, you know, people would break into it, seeing what they can find. And you'd have, you know, used clothes, basically.
And the ordinance the city is working on would prevent that drop box situation. Is that correct?
The way our ordinance is written, that isn't allowed. No, no drop-off boxes. Nothing gets exchanged unless it's exchanged inside the store premises.
And it doesn't have to be a nonprofit, though. That seems to be another antiquated vestige of that ordinance.
This does not have to be a nonprofit, and it's, I, I can't really quite imagine the reason behind that, other than to limit it to entities like-
I have one more question. Okay, we have two now in downtown thrift stores.
You have two in downtown, and you have one-
Right, the new one that's on-
By the Sabre.
Right, right.
Or what used to be the Sabre.
So there's total of three. Now, if someone else comes in and says they want to open a thrift shop on, let's say, towards, on High Street, one of the empty buildings or something, you're, you're looking at three. What is, what, how does our ordinance read now? Would they be able to open, or you're saying that we're already limited?
If you extend this ordinance, it's the amended ordinance that is in effect. So if we, downtown is a single- patient point set by thrift stores. Any thrift store that wants to come to downtown is going to- They will look at things like whether-
How about a farmer's market? What if someone just wants to come to a farmer's market and sell their, their items that may have been pre-owned? Would that, would that require a permit, or is this for fixed locations only?
If you're conducting a farmer's market, you're typically conducting street. That would require a permit, permit allowing you to block off the street. That's- Thrift stores, you're talking about establishment that is intended to remain. They're selling merchandise goods. They're not selling perishable.
The fixed store. So at this point, I mean, the council can just adopt with fourth, a four-fifth vote, continuing the emergency ordinance, allowing LaLa's to stay in business, and to allow other thrift stores during that time to apply? Or have we reached the saturation point, or will no other? They're not even called thrift stores anymore, aren't they?
You have not reached the saturation point in the location where, is it LaLa's?
Yeah.
I think you've reached the saturation point there. You will, if another one opens up in that area. And that other one that opens up, by the way, cannot be within 300 feet of LaLa's. But once you, once you reach that point, then you've hit saturation, and you, you'll come to us for the third thrift shop. That'll, that'll trigger a review by the community development department to see if- Too much of a proliferation-
But that would give us six months to see if this is getting out of hand, if too many people are trying to come in. If we do this, we'll hear back from the city mid-year with how it's going, and, you know, if other thrift shops are applying for permits.
Absolutely. You direct us to bring you back a report on how this urgency ordinance is holding up out there within the, the next three or four months. We'll be happy to do that.
Everybody good with giving it a little more time to see how thrift stores? I mean, we are in a COVID world. I don't know if this is a really fair time to be putting, putting this in stone about thrift stores. And we'll hear again from it mid-year. And we'll hear again from it mid-year. Give it a little more time. Okay? Is there a motion? I'll, I'll make a motion for that to adopt the, the extension urgency ordinance for another nine months with the, with the, with the understanding that we'll probably get the, an update about June on or about May or June, about how it's going and with some, some firm rules that we can look at. Is there a second? Call the roll, please. Call the roll, please. Call the roll, please. Was there any discussion? Was there any discussion? Was there any discussion? Was there any discussion? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, City Clerk. Sorry, City Clerk. Sorry, City Clerk. Sorry, City Clerk. I haven't been saying, is there a discussion after the, after the second? I haven't been saying, is there a discussion after the, after the second? I haven't been saying, is there a discussion after the, after the second? I haven't been saying, is there a discussion after the, after the second? Was there any other, is there any other discussion after the second? Was there any other, is there any other discussion after the second? Was there any other, is there any other discussion after the second? Was there any other, is there any other discussion after the second? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Call the roll, please. Call the roll, please. Call the roll, please. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Robertson. Mayor Robertson. Mayor Robertson. Mayor Robertson.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Councilmember Guerra. Councilmember Guerra. Councilmember Guerra. Councilmember Guerra.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro. Councilmember Mendoza Navarro. Councilmember Mendoza Navarro. Councilmember Mendoza Navarro.
Yes.
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 Councilmember Trahill. Councilmember Trahill. Councilmember Trahill. Councilmember Trahill.
Yes.
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 Mayor Pro Tem Cho. Mayor Pro Tem Cho. Mayor Pro Tem Cho. Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, with that, that ends our public hearing items. Okay, with that, that ends our public hearing items. Okay, with that, that ends our public hearing items. Okay, with that, that ends our public hearing items. We're going to regular business and we'll take a five-minute break and reconvene at We're going to regular business and we'll take a five-minute break and reconvene at We're going to regular business and we'll take a five-minute break and reconvene at We're going to regular business and we'll take a five-minute break and reconvene at Item seven, consideration and necessary action on a council request to name the police Item seven, consideration and necessary action on a council request to name the police Item seven, consideration and necessary action on a council request to name the police community room, the Dr. Stanley Y. Louis Community Room, or other designation of recognition
so it is a policy that council can revise it on a case-by-case, but that would just be the one instance in this policy that would have to be adjusted for this.
So it could be waived by the council if they would like to pursue?
It says "shall" read, yeah. It doesn't, and it's not an ordinance as a policy, so.
Okay, so this is not an ordinance, so we could deviate with a vote, with a consensus to shorten that period of three years?
Yes.
Before, you know, to put a commemoration on, in a public place. Did Russ Noble, had he even gone three years? Didn't he name the bandstand after him?
No, that was prior to the dis-
Prior to the ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also, real quick, it is asked to do the best you can to contact any living family just to get a family's blessing, basically.
Has that been done?
But staff would be willing to do that if so directed.
Okay, so tonight, we're not voting to actually do this. We're voting to say it's a good idea, right, and have staff follow through on the procedure according to the policy that the city set forth in 2006, right? And then you would bring back, like, how much it would cost for the memorial?
That would be correct.
Okay, and is there any kind of, what is, yeah, what's the plan? Is this to put a plaque next to the community room, or what is the, are we at that stage? What would the memorial consist of?
My understanding is that it would be a plaque that would name, be right outside the community center that would name, and the signage would probably be consistent with the types of signage that we have in the police station, so we can, we can look at some options there.
Council, does anybody have any input? Is everybody good with this?
Well, I'd actually like to make a motion to table it, and so that we can have time to, you know, ask for the busing and get whatever plan that we have. That way, it's done all together and not wait until, let's come back, let's just table and have everything done at the same time.
I think if they table it, though, nothing happens, right? If you table it, don't you have to? I see what you're saying, but tabling, could I get a, what is tabling?
If we just direct staff to do the legwork necessary to see that it's in conformity with our policy and-
That's what you said, I think, just tabling. I had a question on the definition of table. So we're just sending this, is your motion, councilperson?
My motion is to table it until they have further, for the plan.
You want to direct, direct us to provide further information?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And I do want to stand corrected, I made a mistake. Russ Nobles did come before recommissioned and city council.
Did he?
Yes.
Had he even gone three years? Or did they just bend the policy? They waived the policy?
That I will double-check for you, but I do remember now it did go to-
I thought he was alive, because he built it, didn't he? Didn't he help build it?
Yeah, he was around, yeah, it's, it's the bandstand.
Good old Russ.
But, yeah, it did go to council. I think they may have made a-
An exception for that, okay?
By case, correct.
Okay, there's a motion to table this and have staff work on it in the meantime and bring it back to, to the council after all the particulars are figured out and the family's been contacted?
Right.
Okay, so we have a first and second. Is there any further discussion of this item? If not, call the city manager.
There may be callers on the line.
Right. City manager, city clerk, are there callers on the line on this topic?
Caller ending in 664, your line is open. Do you have any comments for council regarding this agenda item? Please use star six to unmute your line. Caller ending in 521, your line is unmuted, is open. Please use star six to unmute your line. Do you have any comments for council regarding this agenda item?
No comment.
We have no emails and we have no further comments on the line. Thank you, Mayor Rob-
Thank you. Thank you, city clerk. With that, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Trahill?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, and just for clarification, city clerk, I believe Councilman Trahill seconded councilperson Mendoza Navarro's initial motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that will move on to item eight, consideration and necessary action on council request to establish new Christmas, a new Christmas greeting sign on Second Street. Do we have a report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a council request from Councilmember Guerra in regard to potentially looking at a new sign for Second Street, a holiday sign. Councilmember Guerra's?
Yes, I just received many calls from the citizens in regards to the Christmas sign on Second Street, and, you know, they've mentioned to me that that sign has been there for many years, and it looks horrible, and it doesn't do justice for the city of Selma, and I have to kind of say I agree with them. I think that at this time, we've never looked at a new Christmas light, and I really think that it would do justice for the city of Selma, so if we can look at that and get a new sign, maybe we can have, I'm not sure who would be responsible, Public Works, maybe Shane or Mike?
That's a great question. So in the past, it has been the Chamber of Commerce that has provided the holiday decorations, and the city stores them and puts them up. I do understand this is a very difficult time to request that of the Chamber, obviously with COVID and everything, so we can certainly, if council would like to direct us to look at some quotes and consider that, you know, look at that, we can do that, or if you would like us to talk to the Chamber about potentially a fundraiser.
I, I think if we can look for the funding source, because I know the Chamber is having a difficult time right now, not being able to fundraise, not being able to really do these events that will help them bring in money. If we can find the funding source, and then also, they mentioned about, do we just want a Christmas sign, or do we want a sign that could be all year round, that's very welcoming, or can we do both? You know, maybe we can get a price on both?
Council, have any input?
The question would be, is that to be replaced this year or to be replaced in the future?
Well, I mean, I know we're looking at, we're already, what, the seventh of this December, of course, and then we're not going to probably meet again till January, so I would say, I don't think we have time really for this year, but can, I mean, again, my, you know, their question was, what if we have a sign all year round? You know, would that be much more welcoming? Or do we want to do both? Maybe we could do the nicer sign for downtown, you know, when they come into Second Street, have that, and then it gives us time to do something for Christmas. I don't, I'm just throwing it, you know, just, anybody else have any suggestions?
It seems like a pretty good timeline. I mean, we're not going to meet again before Christmas, so I can't really decide on anything, and that gives plenty of time. I, I agree, it just says holidays. Has anybody else gotten a text from anybody that says, "This is our city"? It doesn't even say happy, it just says holidays. I mean, come on, we could do better.
I, I actually did get comments as well, it's like, your first item on the agenda should be to replace that, that holiday sign, but I think we should table it as well with, you know, maybe table it till the first of the year that we can budget for it, or, or just, you know, throw some different options out there to see what we can do, and maybe we can do both signs, you know, one like welcome to Selma, and then another one for the holidays.
Right, so I'd like to actually take that, and I'd like to raise it. I'd like to even look into lights, like the cafe lights we have on High Street, take that and put that on Second Street. The other night, when we were at our Christmas tree lighting, did you see how dark it was on Second Street? I mean, it's a safety issue. People cross those dance, the dance kids at the studio and at Oscar's place, they're crossing all the time, and it's really dark. I don't know if this is the proper place to request that as an agenda item, but I'd like to put that on an agenda for, to extend those cafe lights down Second Street, because it is a gateway, someone even called it, I think it was Councilmember Trahill called it a welcome mat to our town, the Second Street, and that is one of the first things that people see in our city, and I think it should be lit up, it should be friendly. I really, when that Christmas tree lighting went on, it was nice. It created a vibe, and did everybody see when the Chamber had the Christmas on early, when they have that Friday? Fox Drugs had Christmas music playing? Was everybody around for that? Because it created a very nice shopping vibe downtown. Even with COVID and the cafe lights came on, we can do that all around our town, you know, we can bring people in and make it look nicer and beautify it, and I don't think it would cost a heck of a lot. In fact, I've had a couple of businesses contact me and a nonprofit saying they would donate the lights. It would just be up to, you know, Public Works to actually put them up. You know, we did it as a citizen on High Street that hot August morning and afternoon, but maybe, you know, it extends to the city the next time, and, you know, we get some donations from citizens for the lights themselves, and maybe dedicate it to the coronavirus victims. I'm getting off topic here, but could we mention, could we make that an agenda item?
We can bring those three suggestions back with more information to you in the future, and the Chamber of Commerce did mention that they have been working on the Second Street light, so we can put that update also from them on that, that they're, they are aware of some businesses that are willing to donate towards that, so we can include that in an update on this request.
Mr. Mayor, members of council?
Go ahead.
Well, Shane?
As Teresa just stated, we have been approached by the Chamber, and they're not set in concrete yet, but there are definitely plans and interest to extend the lighting on Second Street. There's our, there are merchants that are willing to step up, so just to throw that out there.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, we just-
Do we just need a consensus to move this to January? Okay? Everybody good with moving it to January?
And I actually like to revise my motion, if we can table agenda items eight through 11 until January 19.
We have to go there. We have to go to, don't we?
I'll second that motion.
Eight to 11?
Mm-hmm.
Have we finished with seven? Or eight?
On number nine, there was item one, one and two, that we wanted to start in January, however, if, if the council would like to go ahead and table it, I don't know that we would have a lot of business licenses come in in the first two weeks of the year, so we could figure out a way to address it if the council would like to table it.
In reading item 10, they want to open up, like, tomorrow, so don't we need, do we need action on that for them, for the county to be able to open up their testing site tomorrow?
It would be best if the council could approve item 10, so that we have that, otherwise, I think we will, staff would do that and have, you would have to ratify it. So if you could do item 10, that would be appreciated.
And what's the reason for continuing nine and 11 again?
Nine, 11, and I just need-
For me, it's more research. I want to, I want to, I want to actually, I like to review all these CARES Act information, but for some of these, I questioned some of these.
Okay.
That and number, and definitely number 11, I want to, I want to talk about that.
Okay.
So, so let's go ahead and move up number 10, if you'd like, you can move up number 10, and we can, we can discuss that.
Okay, do we, so we have a motion on the floor?
We just need a consensus for that.
So now we're changing the agenda around? Usually when we table things, we just go to the item, we just table it. So you want to table, you want to table eight, right, until January? You want to table nine until January? You want to bring them back? You want to bring them back at the first meeting in January? And 11? And then, and then we would consider item 10 now?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I revise my motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion to table item eight, nine, and 11 to January 19.
Is there a second? Okay, call the roll, please.
Can I confirm who made the second?
Councilman Trahill.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Trahill?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the new item nine, which formerly known as 10, consideration of a resolution of waiving fees of temporary rental of Pioneer Village Main Building to Fresno County Department of Public Health.
Mayor Robertson, members of the city council, as you read through the staff report, Fresno County had made contact with the city on request for doing some COVID-19 testing, and so Tracy Toss and I did a tour of the senior center. You know, some of you might know that Eric White has the old Wheaton Seed Building and Pioneer Village Main Building, and so based on the tour and some of the requirements and things that they would need, Pioneer Village Main Building was the best fit. So yes, they, we moved in some stuff, staff has been out there, alarm codes and keys. They would like to begin tomorrow morning, they'd be there Tuesday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Tuesday through Saturday, and you may have heard Monday through Friday, they did request Tuesday through Saturday, and I think they want to do a weekend to try to catch more people from the week. So basically, we charging the same, we were looking at the same rent we just charged the church, and that's where the rental came out, so it's not really a hard cost to the city, but in fairness to the Pioneer Village Enterprise Fund, we are looking for the CARES Act based from the general fund to offset the additional utilities that would be paid because of their usage in the facility itself. They've been very easy to work with. Other than that, have any questions?
Hold on, just a sec, Councilman, just a sec. So the 1,800 is the hard cost? That's the actual utilities? That's what they, that's what the city spends on?
That would be the-
To heat it and to provide water, right, and electricity?
That's basic, what we've done, we've set out with our assistant, Isaac, and gone through the average over the last year with no one in the facility. The 1,800 would be what we would project based on the time and the amount of time they project to be there, is the additional cost it's going to cost for them to be in the facility.
Is anybody paying, pardon me, is anybody paying the rents, rents right now?
No, the building's empty.
What about the rental for the Pioneer Village? You don't have anybody from, well, I know because of COVID, but this goes through May.
Well, right now, if we would look, Pioneer Village, if we looked at somebody to rent, we would probably open up the rental after the fact, but right now, we're not promoting Pioneer Village without rentals anyway in COVID-19. In addition, I'm kind of excited to have people out there, just because of vandalism, I think will be cut down in winter time. Vandalism does go up, because people seem to be looking for more shelter, so just having all those eyes and people out there and activity, I think would help this winter for additional items.
I have a question. You stated that you're, we're going to use CARES Act to re, to re-
To cover the utilities, that is a proposal.
Question, and that's fine, and I, I'm not questioning that part, but the question I have for you is, because it's the county, can't county-
Couldn't hear you.
Because it's the county, can't the county use their CARES Act for us?
So the county is, is not utilizing the funds? This is county CARES Act funds that they gave us, that we're proposing to use?
Yeah.
I guess to answer the question.
You're saying use their money instead of our own?
Just asking.
No, they typically do not-
They're just saying, hey, we gave you some, just go ahead and give us.
Yeah, they don't pay rent at any of the facilities, but they do have a janitorial service for daily cleaning that they will be providing.
Just, just a question. My motion still stands.
Do we have any, do we have anybody on the line who would like to comment on this item? City clerk?
Hi, caller ending in 515, your line is open. Please use star six to unmute your line. Do you have any comments for council regarding this agenda item?
No comment.
Thank you. Hi, caller ending in 521, your line is unmuted. Do you have any comments for council regarding this agenda item? Please use star six to unmute your line.
No comment.
Thank you.
Bringing this back-
We have no emails. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. Just bringing this back, we got a first, is there a second to approve it?
A second.
Okay, with that, we can bring it back and discuss it, because we have a second on the floor. So councilmember Guerra came up with a logistics, logistical point of, will this interfere with the traffic potentially to Cattlemen's, the restaurant? Their hours are going to be seven to seven. Cattlemen's is like four, right? They open at four? So the question is, there are a lot of people that get test, this is going to be a testing site, right, Mike?
Correct.
Okay, a lot of people are getting tested, because these numbers are just, you know, bending so geometrically right now. Will, is there a, yeah, I mean, what's the term on this? If there are problems, if we get complaints from, from Cattlemen's about the lines there?
Well, I will work with Cattlemen's. We met out there last week talking about parking prior to us being, you know, with the new regulations, too, Cattlemen's is only supposed to be doing dine-out, but along the road, we're going to open the gate, we have the dirt parking lot, they have the gate code, they, they've been instructed where to park, all the way down Arkansas Parkway, not to be on the blacktop. Because they come and go, they really didn't feel like there was going to be a lot of traffic at the same time, because they will take a person in and that person will leave, so there will be a lot of cars coming and going at the same time. It's supposedly not going to be-
They'll do it at the cars, then? They'll go out and test at the cars?
Well, the cars parking, they'll have to do a walk, yeah, walk-up, but-
The logistics of what the possibilities are if there's a lot of, a lot of big traffic.
Lot of traffic will use the front part of it, and then the driveway, and all the way along Arkansas Parkway, without touching any of the blacktop of Cattlemen's. We could use the whole circle and all the way down Arkansas Parkway.
People from driving in, right?
You could park on both sides of Arkansas Parkway, all the way up to Highland, so they didn't feel like, the county, based on their experience, didn't feel like there will be a challenge here.
And what's the-
We're going to monitor it. Again, the challenge would be from four to seven, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's going to be quite simple. Are you all right?
Seven, it says seven to seven here.
Yeah, I'm saying from seven to four, there won't be a challenge, because Cattlemen's won't be open.
Right, they're not open then.
The overlap would be from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Three hours of overlap.
Correct.
And then, and then what's the term of the agreement?
Well, presently, it's first, the end of May, and if they feel like they need to go longer, then we tell them we would come back to city council for an extension.
So we would hear again from, at the end of May, on how this is going, and-
We're going to try to update you on a regular basis.
What's the term?
I was just going to say, hopefully, we'll be out of this end of May.
Yeah, hopefully, it'll turn into a vaccination center, right? Hopefully, that's what they'll be giving the vaccinations, let's hope. Is there a termination, have we seen the agreement? I didn't see the actual agreement. Does the agreement have a termination clause? And what is it? In other words, if this is either, is it bilateral? If the city says, hey, this isn't working out, you got 30 days, hit it, or if they say, hey, this isn't working out, we're vacating. Do we have one of those? And if we don't, we need to have an exit clause in that agreement?
Yeah, and that is, the agreement is something that Michael's been working on, the facilities use agreement, and Dr. Palmiville-
Sounds good with that, having an exit clause.
Dr. Palmiville, when he called and requested this, he did say that, you know, if you have, if we go back to a state where you can rent the facilities, then we would look for another location for this. So I don't, I don't think they want to take away from any future rental by any means.
That's, is that the same as a termination clause, though?
No, I understood we should have that, yeah.
Can you put one of those in, please?
Yeah.
With 30-day?
Yeah.
Okay, and then bring it back to council?
Yeah, we can let you know, but they're, they're willing to move at any time with the understanding of respect, and also, if their numbers are, or anything changes, they will-
I completely agree with that, but you know how things get. If you don't have it in writing, and they get busy, they're going to say, sorry, you know, we don't have to go anywhere. And they might not, they might not, but let's just avoid any misunderstanding, put it in writing ahead of time, just in case, okay?
Sure, I'll do that.
All right, thanks so much. All right, everybody good? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Trahill?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, okay, with that, we'll move on to departmental reports. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As I mentioned to you previously, the county has hired a new provider to oversee the emergency shelter at Super 8, and that is West Care, so they are now overseeing that emergency shelter, those rooms, and they have extended their contract for a few months with the goal of getting the participants into permanent housing solutions. They have, the county has also added additional resources of counseling and different social services to help facilitate that end goal of getting them into housing and out of that shelter, so it no longer operates as an emergency shelter. In the incoming mayor, Mayor Robertson, has requested that we have a meeting with the county, and we are working on scheduling that, so he and I will meet with them, and then we are also working on getting the county to come to the meeting in January, so we can have a discussion with the whole council about homelessness and the bigger picture for the city of Selma. So that's my update, thank you, and I also would like to, again, welcome our new council members and new mayor. Congratulations, again, on your election, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the hospitality tonight, to the city clerk, we really appreciate it. It's really, really very, very kind, thank you. City attorney?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Assistant city manager Moreno? Over screen you're on? Feed that dog?
Yeah.
We can move on to another department, in the meantime, if we're having trouble locating him, until we locate him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like, I just want to say congratulations to all, and look forward to bigger, brighter futures, and that's all I have to report for Public Works.
Thanks a lot, Shane.
Thank you.
Archie Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Last week, we conducted promotional exams for our engineers. That's, that's their title, they're our driver operators. They have the responsibility of driving and operating all of our fire apparatus, and they went through a relatively extensive promotional process over two days last week with a written exam, an oral exam, an oral board, and a, a long day of practical, where they demonstrated competency on, on all of our apparatus, so we're excited. We'll be promoting three firefighters from the position of firefighter to engineer, and they should be starting this week, so we're excited for them, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Police chief, comments?
Mayor Robertson, council members, good evening. We also had a promotional, last Thursday, we established a sergeant list, extensive process- Uh, extensive process, just like fire, and also, uh, Friday, we had our interview for police commander. And this week, I, I, I will interview a couple more. So, we're gonna be promoting also a sergeant right away, and then the police commander, it may take a while, because if we go external, they gotta go through the background, polygraph process, just like I did. So, it's, um, looking good, finally, we're moving forward, we could have another sergeant promotion, um, because there is a sergeant that is possibly leaving, it looks like he is gonna be leaving, he's just waiting for the word from, uh, the agency he applied for. On the homeless front, we've been spending a lot of time at Schaefer Park, at the basin there. I've been working with Mike and Shane, code enforcement, and today, is it D and G fence? Is that what is D and G fence, when out there, many holes on the, the fence line on the side of the railroad, and also, um, on the other side, the park side where the baseball diamonds are, so they fixed all of that, we made some arrests there. There's not a lot of encampments there like there had been, but, um, there were, were a handful. So we got them out of there, and we will continue to monitor that, make sure they do not return. We also have an operation for the encampments on Golden State, south of the Sunmay Raisin Plant. Union Pacific, that's their property, but we'll be working with them on an operation on January thirteenth. And we'll provide the officers, um, if they need assistance in making arrests or removing people, providing security for them and assistance. And, um, I think that, that's all I have.
Do they have their own security, Union Pacific?
You know, I, we had a meeting with them last week, and my impression is, they're spread out, you know, throughout the, um, the valley, so they don't have the resources that we have, so, um, I'm gonna provide them with the team that day. A sergeant and five officers.
And there's a cleanup crew that goes along with that as well?
Yes, they have, they will do the cleanup, it's like, that's not gonna cost us anything, we're not gonna be involved in that, that part, the city.
Thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
Parks and Community Services Director, Mike Kirschner?
Just wanted to report, Mayor Robertson, members of city council, I did, wanna let you know, the, the Selma CARES homeless coalition didn't meet last week. We had a very good meeting, uh, the county was able to call in this meeting last time, we just, unfortunately, it was a conflict in scheduling. But our next meeting will be January twelfth to ten AM, so we're gonna meet quarterly, um, four times next year, unless issues or programs, uh, come arise, then we'll schedule additional meetings, but I think I forwarded everybody in the weekly read the schedule, so. I appreciate everybody who's calling in, we have a, a good group now.
Are you, um, meeting in person with them, or are you zooming?
Both.
Both, some choose to come in to the.
Some choose to call and some, some to meeting, so.
And how many people are, are a part of that?
Uh, we have about, what, five or six organizations now, plus city staff, and we have a couple of new organizations who joined.
And, and the primary topic is homelessness in Selma?
Primary topic is homelessness, and basically, the idea there is to collaborate, know what everybody's doing, understand point of contact, doing follow-ups, and just trying to have a sense of, you know, what, the right hand knows what the left hand's doing, and so we're overlapping and working together and collaborating.
When I was reading the grand jury report from two thousand nineteen on homelessness, the biggest problem is there are too many groups that don't know what each other's doing, I think it's really important to have a, a group that coordinates efforts among groups that minister to the homelessness, intend to the homeless. Really important to have that, and it's good that you're monitoring that and you're bringing it back to the city, so that we know what everyone's doing in the city.
Yeah, you know, Selma Police Department created this, and so we're just trying to keep it going, uh, chiefs and city manager were there, and assistant Isaac was also there, so. Working hard and so we can keep making progress.
Thank you. Okay, um, did we ever get our assistant city manager on the line?
Yes.
I'm back. Sorry about that, I lost internet connection, I had to come try and fix it real quick. All of a sudden, you guys went dark, I was like, what, what happened here?
Hate when that happens.
Yeah, some quick updates, um, I just wanna talk to you about the high school, high speed rail training program that we have. We are gonna have to halt the class for a little bit due to the COVID outbreak right now, um, the whole state order. So we're gonna be making up that class in the backend, uh, for a couple of weeks. I'm gonna meet with the High Speed Rail, also with Chuck Rojas, to see how we're gonna kinda get this cleaned up and picked back up. We, we thought for the safety of the kids and for the teachers as well, I mean, it might be better just to put a halt on there for a couple of weeks at least. They're almost finished, first, finished with the first cohort anyways, so, but we'll figure that out, and then I'll give you more update as we go further. We do have another bid that's coming to fruition as well, um, the Huntsman Thompson Project, which is the, that street winding, we will be looking to have that completed here, probably going to construction sometime in January, uh, early February as well. So that project is, is coming here shortly for you to finish up, and that completes my report, thank you.
Have you, um, put the bid out for that yet, that project, the bid's gone out?
It, the bid's out right now.
Okay. What's the due date on those bids?
Uh, I think it's coming up here maybe in the next week or so, I'd have to look up that date, but I know it's coming here very quick.
All right, with that, that concludes departmental reports, we'll move on to council reports, um, council member Mendoza Navarro?
And I attended the lighting, my very first one. It was actually really nice to see, you know, the fire truck and Santa Claus, and it was really nice. The other thing, um, we only have much to report right now.
The first meeting?
That's the first meeting, and then, um, I just realized that I did not congratulate Mayor or Bev on your, or your win, congratulations, and that's all I have for today.
All right, and then we'll go to, um, district two, councilman Trejo?
Attended, uh, two, uh, turkey giveaways where, um, uh, did a couple of, um, donations to the Fresno County homeless. They canceled the SKF meeting, the last meeting we had, so.
Thank you, council member Gara?
Um, I too, attended the Christmas lighting, which was really nice, it was a little different this, this year, because we didn't have all the people around, which was a little sad, but we did have a few children that did show up, so that was okay, that was a little nice. The other thing, I did also, um, donate, uh, to some few, um, nonprofits that were giving away food, and then I'm also doing the Santa, or the gift away with the schools. They have a list of children that, um, they didn't know if they were going to be able to give gifts out this year, but they said they were gonna do their best, and they do have a, a list of children that, um, anyone can sign up for if you'd like to help support the school. The deadline, I believe, is December eleventh, so if, you know, if anybody, you're welcome to contact the school district, and they, like I said, they do have a list of children that, um, they range from little kids, you know, all the way to high school, that put their name in this, in this basket, or, you know, so that we could help. And then the other thing that was brought to my attention also by one of the administrators there at the school, and asked if it would be okay to continue the, um, hotline number that you posted there, Mike, on the, uh, marquee, you know, talking about the, uh, suicide awareness, she said that was on there for two weeks.
Yeah, I, I put on through the, the calendar schedule, the doctor Fisher and, um, I forgot the last name of the instructor, had provided the dates, so I can get back in touch and see if they'd like to replace it up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they, they requested this time period, and so that's what we did, so I'll follow up and see.
Perfect.
Yes.
Okay, I told her I'd mention, they asked if I could mention it, and I said, yeah, I'll let you know, so, if you can touch bases with them, that'd be great.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
Pro Tem?
Um, I don't know if this pertained, but we did do a, uh, senior Thanksgiving meal. We did it, three hundred and fifty plates, and, like, Chief Lopez and Fire Chief, they all came and, and delivered it to them. This is a little bit different, usually, the seniors come in and pick it themselves, but this year was so hard on them, so, I mean, the way COVID gets, so, they went ahead and delivered it to their homes, so some of the seniors that do not have families, at least they have a, a full Thanksgiving meal on Thanksgiving Day, so, and this has been funded by all, um, like, six organizations from Selma. The Lions Club, Two Lions Club, Aquanis Club, Rotary Club, Selma Women's Club, let's see, Selma Care. So, basically, doesn't cost the city any money, the money's donated, when they know I come around, they always give me the check. And so it's, every year, we, you know, we, we're able to do it, we started this about nine years ago, and we started about a hundred and, a hundred and fifty plates, we're up to three hundred and fifty now, so.
Wow, good job.
That's it.
Okay, I, I wanted to, um, say I went to, I attended the Christmas tree lighting ceremony as well, really sad this year, but nice that we had it, but it was kinda muted, because we couldn't really have any people there. Um, I wanted to, um, I wanted to ask the chief, um, I've had several people talk to me about the speeding issue in Selma, can we put that on your radar for twenty twenty-one, um, specifically in front of the high school on Wright Street? And Mitchell and Fig, and Barbara, um, people.
Barbara, Barbara in what?
I'm sorry, um, Barbara, um, east of, um, McCall.
Barbara McCall.
Take, take a look, um, the, the people there that I talked to when I walked around are very, um, they're at their wits' end about all the speeders, and I know we had this discussion what a month and a half ago, and, and I said, do you have one of those signs, you know, that shows the speed and it's broken right now?
Yeah, we gotta get a new one, um.
But you said that really is an effect, right?
Let me ask you something, when, years ago, before I was here, they had motorcycle officers, what do you think about that?
You get lots of complaints, so when you put the motorcycle officers out, then people come to my office and say, why'd I get a speeding ticket?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So what outweighs the other? I say, safety outweighs a good tongue lashing from people who get speeding tickets, and if officers are fair about it, right, and they judiciously write the tickets, and it achieves that end, then I think the city's doing its, its job, but, right, I mean, it's gonna have those consequences too, but these people, these people that have contacted me, have kids, they're in danger. People are racing in front of the high school, just, if you could put that on your radar and come up with some creative ideas, I think the last time, you know, you said it comes down to having people on motorcycles riding tickets.
Well, or, or we get more of the speed signs, fix, fix the sign we have and get more. I like motorcycles, but, you know, I, it's been raised, the complaint issue has been raised to me, I don't know why we stopped using motorcycles, we have some.
And they're electric, right? I mean, they're really solid.
Well, we have some electric, and we have two regular bikes, uh, BMWs, so, I mean, that's what I would like to do, is institute those again.
Just something, just something to cut down the speeding there, these people are really desperate that are talking there. Most of the people that contact me say, put speed bumps out there, and I know, I don't think cities can do that anymore, it's a liability issue, right?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any more speed bumps allowed in the city, because it's not the best, there are other ways to slow traffic.
Right, okay, thank, thank you for that, I'll move, I'll move on. The city manager and I had a pre-budget meeting with the state senator Melissa Hurtado's office. Slim pickings this year at the state, I mean, this COVID is eating into the revenues of this, this, the state, and they're gonna be very conservative about what they divvy out to the, to the cogs, to the counties, which come to us eventually. Um, I wanted to say a big thank you to, uh, Shane Farrell, Public Works. Um, he, he had, um, an item, um, removed, um, from the, the sidewalk on a moment's notice. He was really very good about that, a couple of large items, um, he was, uh, on the spot on that, and did it really nicely, and did it quickly and professionally, and that was, provided more safety for our city, I wanna thank the, our police chief Gomez, um, had a call from a, um, some, a citizen who's been having a big tru, big problem with the homeless behind their rentals, which was on highway land, which means the city can't, um, they can't send officers out, it has to be Caltrans and CHP. And so, um, our police chief, our city manager, they contacted, um, Caltrans and the CHP, and they went out there and, and cleared that area out, and the, the, the folks that were living back there said they had people peeping, they had people pooping, they had people throwing things, they had people yelling at them, it was just making their lives miserable. And so, thank you to our, our city for using its know-how to work with, you know, Caltrans. And, and, and this ties into our call with the city manager with Senator Hurtado's office, they have offered their services to provide um, a liaison to the governor's office to ask the CHP, because they're the ones that direct CHP and Caltrans. So we have that line that's been offered if we have issues in the future on highway land, so that's an avenue that's allowed to us. The last thing I would like to ask, um, is can we put on the agenda for the next meeting to put special, if we have special presentations, more than one, can we put it at five thirty, can we put it in an earlier meeting? Because experiencing city council meetings in the past that have gone very late, like this council meeting has the potential to do, but we've had lots to do today. The, the, the special presentations at six o'clock really set us back, so I'd like to put that on the, on the council for, for consideration by the council as an agenda item. Thank you. Okay, and with that, we'll move on to, okay, departmental, actually, city of Selma, uh, mayoral appointments. This is the next one, and this is, uh, per section four oh six oh five of the government code. I am making the following twenty twenty-one mayoral appointments, um, please let me know, council, with any issues or questions. I will start with myself. As the mayor, I will go to council of governments, because that is the mayor council. Associated with that is the Fresno County Rural Transit Agency. After every cog meeting, you also have the FCR TA meeting. Involved with that is the Regional Transportation Mitigation Fee Agency, which is part of that. The Mayor Select Committee, and Team Selma, which our new council members might not know about, that is a group of business people and utilities that get together every quarter and talk about what's going on in the economy of Selma. You know, people from, uh, people from the community college, people from the city college, people from, you know, PG&E, people from, with different stakeholders, and it's a really good meeting, once we, we haven't been having them, right, city manager, in, what, eleven or twelve months, it's been a while.
I don't recall having them, yeah.
Yeah, I can't recall any in twenty twenty, what a year, so, um, when that resumes, the mayor is, per tradition, has always been a part of it, and a council member's always been a part of it on a rotating basis. So then, we'll start with the, um, with the council member, and then we'll rotate every three months on that for Team Selma. Um, and then we'll move on to, um, okay, after that, we have Mayor Pro Tem Bev Cho. You're going to be on the Upper Kings Basin Integrated Regional Water Management. You're going to be on the Air Pollution Control District Special City Selection Committee, and you will be a Team Selma rotating alternate. Council member Sarah Guerra. You will be, uh, the alternate for council of governments. You'll be, which will automatically make you an alternate for the FCR TA, the Fresno County Rural Transit Agency alternate. And the city clerk will be sending a, an email out on these, um, as well. You will be our new SKF sanitation district representative. You will be an alternate for the Regional Transportation Mitigation Fee Agency, which is also part of that cog triumvirate. You will be an alternate for the Southeast Regional Solid Waste Committee alternate, and you will be a Team Selma rotating alternate. I forgot to mention, Mayor Pro Tem Cho, you will be the Five Cities Economic, um, council representative. And, um, councilman Trejo, you will be the SKF sanitation district alternate, thank you for your service in the past there. You will be a Team Selma rotating alternate, you'll be a Five Cities alternate for Mayor Pro Tem Cho, and you'll be the Southeast Regional Solid Waste Committee representative. Council member Mendoza Navarro, you'll be the, you'll be on the South San Joaquin Valley Citizens for Clean Air Committee. You'll be on the Highway Ninety-Nine Beautification Committee, and you'll be the Team Selma rotating alternate. alternate. That concludes...
So, Mr. Mayor, this, uh, this organization that you just spoke of, we also need to vote on that, correct, Neil? These appointments, we can, we can, we can, we, we have to, the council has to vote if we like, if we approve that and if we don't approve, he has to redo the, rearg... Correct?
Talking about a different, uh, appointment. Respect to sports. Our mayoral appointments that are subject to...
Okay, that, that's fine, so then let's go ahead. We're good. We'll talk about it next meeting.
They've always done the members to various...
Okay, so from what I understand, the topic that we didn't hit tonight, topic 10 or 11, um, dealt with the, um, powers of the elective mayor and the duties of the elective mayor, right? And one of those was picking the commissions. It's up to the mayor to pick the commissions.
Right, and the reason...
Subject to the advice and consent of the city council.
So you, you stated, you stated your issues. Um, I accept it for now and let's go ahead and just close the meeting. He's already appointed his staff. I mean, it's a late night, so we're good. I mean, we're done.
Did anybody else have any issues? Any questions?
So, just real quick, um, so since we tabled number 11, these were changing some of the, um, I guess roles? So then if we're appointing, we really didn't, we didn't go over...
That was a discussion item.
Okay.
So that wasn't an action item. So the rules exist right now? That was just a discussion of the existing rules? All right.
And the only reason that was there, just to clarify things for you all. We previously adhered to a policy of publishing notices of vacancies for our various commissions.
I don't, I think we, I think we pushed the item. We tabled it and I don't think we had an explanation, but what we do need is probably public here. We probably need the public to go ahead and speak and close this out. We'll, we'll discuss this later.
Okay. So we'll bring that topic back in January. All right. With that, we will go to oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council on any item within its jurisdiction, but not on the agenda. No action or discussion will be taken on any of the items raised during oral communications. Uh, members of the public will please limit their remarks to three minutes. City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Hi caller, ending in 515. Your line is unmuted. Please, you, your line is open. Please use star six to unmute your line.
Hi, Reyna, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Richard Smith. How you guys doing? I'm setting this out for one.
Oh, it, I, hang on, we're going to take caller ending in 515 first. Is that me, Reyna? If your last three... Yes, if your last three numbers of your phone number are 515, yes. Please state your name for the record.
I'm 1515, I'm, I'm probably 515.
Then please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Richard Smith. Do you hear me okay?
I hear you fine.
Yeah, um, Scott, I was, saw a part of your YouTube on the Christmas lighting. If you guys look at, um, Mountain View and Freeway 99, they got the LED lights up there on that one side. That's an idea after you told that about the downtown. I don't know how much those things cost, but, uh, I do have a couple of my P G and E for like their $12 a month. That might work over there on Second Street. And another thing, I got my check today for the radio station and, you know, Humberto's having problems with restaurants and stuff, so I'm in kind of a COVID mess. And then the FCC is gonna, you know, that guy, the lawyer lied to the FCC and the guy in Fresno lied to him. That cost me a hundred thousand and I think the city of Selma, since I was like a victim, I talked to FBI in Fresno, you know, I don't know what you can do, but you guys could write to the FCC and maybe when they auction those stations off, John Harris wanted to cling a one, maybe some of the money could come to Selma. I don't know if that could be done or not. And I can't really sue these people. I just don't, you know, the lawyers have been told, you know, to stay out of it. The FCC people I know say, I'm not in the proceeding anymore, but it did cost me a hundred thousand. That's one reason I can't finish all the stuff I want to do and I'm 70 years old and I'm getting kind of tired of all this mess. I've had it, you know? And that's probably what they want, but anyway, Scott, I think you're doing a pretty good job. This is the first time I've ever tried this system out, so, yeah, you guys could go look at those LED lights and see what you think.
Thanks a lot, Richard. Thanks for the, um, the guidance there. We'll take a look at them.
Oh, and then also there's a possibility I could put the K M K microwave at the old Selma PD and Jace Communications is going to do my ham radio. I just got it today and I got to wait for software, so I don't know if that's possible or not. And, um, one time I was, you know, I deal with Fresno Distributing and the N H K from, um, LA, the Chinese net, uh, Japanese network, they done me in English and the K M K across from Fresno Distributing had a neon sign that said K M K on it. So if I could ever put my station up, you know, on one of these signs, I could put neon sign and put the city of Selma on it too, if I had the money. So, anyway, I'm with you guys. I'm glad you're there and, and, um, you guys all be safe. Merry Christmas.
Thanks a lot, Richard. You too. Be safe.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you for your patience. Caller ending in 521. Your line is open. Please use star six to unmute your line. You have three minutes. Can I have your name for the record?
Hi, Reyna Yolanda Torres. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. You may proceed.
Okay. Um, actually, I just wanted to mention something that I seen on the agenda printout, um, and I know it's going to be a closed session, but I hope that you're, um, not considering the dismissal of the city attorney. With two new city council members aboard, I think you need to give them plenty of time to get updated with any litigations, um, if any, or contracts that are going on. Um, I really hope you seriously consider not leaving our city without a city attorney. I believe and I know that Neil has been doing a great job, so I don't know where this is coming from, but I hope that, um, you think about everything that he's done for us, uh, because we as a city, um, you know, and a lot of city members in the community are very happy with his services, so we are very surprised that we've seen this on the agenda. I thought maybe we should have been notified that this was something that was being considered. Um, so I hope we get more information on that before you make any, uh, drastic decisions that can affect our city as we're trying to move forward in a positive direction with new city council members and a new mayor. So, um, with that said, I hope you consider, uh, seriously consider, uh, tabling that until further information can be, uh, looked into. Also, as far as the speeding, I do, uh, agree with the chief as far as utilizing the motorcycles that we have. Um, I know I have a problem here in front of Harroquite School. I'm on Mitchell and Peach and we have so much speeding with all these elementary school kids. My husband and I are always out there watching the kids, making sure they're crossing the street right, um, not running out in traffic, so it's really, really been a big problem for us. I know we looked into speed, uh, speed bumps and because like, you know, the city said it's too expensive for our fire engines and ambulances and police officers to be going through speed bumps when there's an emergency, so we know that's not an option. So anyway, I hope you consider utilizing those. Uh, maybe we can get together and talk about some other options that might work for us to keep our community safe. Thank you so much and I want to welcome our new city council members and our new mayor, um, Mr. Robertson. Thank you so much and you all have a great evening.
Thanks, Ms. Torres. You too.
Thank you.
Do we have any other callers on the line, City Clerk?
Those are all the callers that we have today. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we will conclude oral communications and I will announce that we are going to go into closed session. Public employee discipline dismissal release pursuant to government code section 54957. Title city attorney, what, what is this? What is this item? This is our first meeting. We haven't even met before. We have two new council members and we're going to, someone wants to fire the city attorney? Who, who requested this? Why?
Move into closed session?
We haven't adjourned the meeting yet. So...